Welcome, everybody. We're going to get started. We have lots of -- we're going to start over. We have lots of cute faces here, so we want to get started. My noise is getting close to bedtime, right? We're going to call the meeting to order. Can everybody stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance with us?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where whose stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very nice. Good job. We have two emergency evacuations on either side of the room. Any correspondence that can be listed is outside on the table. You could take a look at that. So we are very excited. We have lots of adorable faces in here today from various places. We're going to start with Watson students, who I believe are going to present "Soaring to New Heights." Dr. Johnson?
Thank you very much.
Yes, we'll come right up.
All right. Before we begin, could we ask Mrs. Pascharella, where are you? If you would like to go and introduce some of the teachers who are involved in this as well? Thank you.
Hello? It's on? Okay. Hi, so I'm Jen Pascharella. And tonight, we have the students performing for you based on an education foundation grant that was written last year titled "Soaring to New Heights." It was based around social-emotional learning. It was written by Mrs. Kayhan, Mrs. Montemorano, Mrs. Rice, and Mrs. Buckeye. And since tonight's really about the kids, I'll let them sort of take over and explain a little bit more about what they've prepared for you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Madeline Rich.
I am Grace Moravich.
I am Annabella Hamilton.
I'm Olivia Remo.
I'm Sadie Davidoff.
I'm Kelly Walsh.
I'm Artemis Aslanis.
I'm Daniel Digiavanna.
I'm Caitle Ferrari.
My name is Shaq Durant.
My name is Ethan Johnson.
I'm Ollie Curran.
And mine is Kylie Berry.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The theme at Watson this year is soaring to new heights. We want everyone to be the best they can be.
We want to be able to solve problems independently.
We want to feel safe and comfortable in school and at home.
Last June, a bunch of 3rd and 4th grade students met several times with Mrs. Kayhan and Mrs. Montemorano. We had conversations about what makes us feel strong, what makes us feel secure, and how we can handle problems that arise, like bullying or being left out. These conversations became the basis for our lyrics of our song, "Soaring to New Heights."
We wanted to let other kids get our message, to stand up for themselves, to be strong, to help others, and to look toward a bright future. We met several times to revise the words so it really explained our message.
Next, we met with Ms. Brickman and Ms. Ink to choose the melody. We had to try out different tunes that would make our lyrics sound right.
We finally got it right.
When school started September, we introduced the song to the rest of the Watson kids at an assembly. Then, Ms. Brickman taught it to everyone at music class.
The entire school sang the song at the balloon launch. That was really cool.
"Soaring to New Heights" was also the theme of our evening of wellness and enrichment. Mindfulness stations were set up around the school, and the kids can choose from activities, such as zumba, mirror movement, learning about mandalas, and visiting the Zen Den. That night was really relaxing.
There are other activities planned for the rest of the year. Assemblies in January will help us remember to make good choices. We will also be making collars in art class to help us relax when we become stressed or upset.
Now, we'd like to show you a video about these two events and how we're singing our song.
Here it is.
So cute.
I just wanted to say that balloon never got off the ground, but our spirit certainly did.
Thank you so much, guys. That was amazing. You were so great. Thank you, Mrs. Pascharella, also. Let them... Does she want to?
Kelly said, "Am I staying?"
Sure. Actually, I would like her to stay so I could look at her cute little face that entire time. She's adorable.
Very cute. So cute.
Just want to say thank you again to Mrs. Pascharella and the teachers at Watson, the kids. That was amazing. And also, thank you to the Rockville Center Ed Foundation, who provided the grant for "Soaring to New Heights" because they really do so many wonderful things for Rockville Center, so we definitely want to thank them as well. And that was just an amazing job. A great way to start the meeting. Thank you so much. Now, we're going to do our summer program annual review. Dr. Johnson?
Thank you very much. I'm actually going to turn this over to Dr. Leahy, who coordinates the work done for our summer program. Lorraine?
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. So, believe it or not, there was snow falling today, and the trees are beautiful as I drove in. And this morning, one of the things I did was finalize the dates for summer 2020. So, this program starts very early in the school year. We're already preparing for the many programs that happen every summer and have been really expanding and been built and been really fun. They include fun, enrichment, remediation, and opportunities for specialized instruction for a number of students. We're really, really proud of this program. It's grown not just in numbers, and I have to say that Mr. Webster, who ran the summer program, he was the summer program principal this year, broke the record, broke the existing, at least recent, record from the last decade. The enrollment is wonderful, and that's one thing. But I also am proud of the fact that the programs are expanding in ways that not only address the interests of a more diverse and increasingly diverse student population, but also become very inclusive. All students are able to participate, and we make that happen in a number of ways. In recent years, there have been some programs that were put in place to support the needs of students who needed additional remediation, like the BRIDGE program for some of our students with disabilities that prepared them for entering 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, gave them a little bit of pre-teaching and some readiness skills for those grades. And then, of course, a state-approved summer program for our specialized classes for core and rise. So, we're always kind of looking for ways to expand opportunities in the summer. I'm very proud of the exceptional team that led the programs in 2019. I mentioned Mr. Webster was the summer program principal. Mr. Keith Eckert ran the pre-K program. And Ms. Christie Tersey, who's not here this evening, she ran the Regents' remediation program. So, Chris Webster and Mr. Eckert are here to talk to you a little bit about what happened in 2019.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Keith Eckert. I ran the pre-K program this summer. I just want to take you through a couple slides just to tell you about the program, and there's some pictures of our students in there. He's setting me up. All right, there we go. We'll do it the old way. So, our pre-K program is really just getting the students ready for kindergarten. We want to just take them through just a regular kindergarten routine. A lot of the skills we promote are just kindergarten readiness, social-emotional learning, of course, letter formation, a lot of just listening, sort of gross motor kind of coordination things is really just our most important sort of things we run through the pre-K program. We have our read-aloud, we have group play. We've been incorporating some STEAM activities the last year or two. It's usually what we like to do in each class, there's about two to three home buildings, so we tend to have like a Riverside Covert class. There'll be students in Watson and Hewlett, so there's always an opportunity for children to make friends with somebody new before they enter September. That's kind of one of our other main goals. In 2018, we had about 125 students across seven classes. And then, just recently, last year, we were able to add another section, and we were up to 155 students across eight classes. So, just some of our program highlights from last year and the year before. We're trying to go green. Instead of doing a nice big snail mail packet, we were able to email just some information to parents about how drop-off worked, pickup worked, some forms that fell out if they wanted to opt out of pictures, our pickup authorization form. We run the pre-K program at a covert, and we really want to make sure the students are safe. We want to make sure that when the teacher dismisses Johnny or Suzie, that it's to the authorized people that that parent wants. So, security is a top priority. We do request that whoever's picking up has photo ID with them as well. So, that's something that we've changed over the years. In enrichment, we were very fortunate that the South Hempstead Fire Department joined us last year. There's some really great pictures on that. I'll touch on that a little later. Every year, we do a trip to the library where the students get to apply for a library card. They get to take out a library card, and then they get to just kind of meet the coordinator in the youth section of the library as well. And then, of course, everybody's favorite, we have Bubble Day, which is exactly what it sounds like. At the end of the program, what we've also been doing is we have a parent survey, so we look for parents to just give us some suggestions on what you think was some of the highlights of your child's experience? What do you think were maybe some of the lowlights? Where can we improve for the next year? And then, one of the other things that we've been working on as a group is just a lot of our teachers are very interested in writing some Ed Foundation grants for some cooperative activities, just some games where the kids can really practice on taking turns and just kind of understand that notion of just waiting their turn and having some patience. So, marketing, one of the great ways that we market, if you have Facebook and you want to follow, we're at RVC Pre-K. We upload pictures on, you know, once or twice a week basis, so the parents are able to just really get a glimpse of what is happening in that child's day each week. We have posters and flyers that are hanging up at the Rockville Center Library. We like to have flyers available at the Board of Ed meetings, at our PTA meetings. Another thing that we do is we contact all the local preschools and just say, "Hey, can you share this for us?" And then, at our kindergarten orientation screening, and really, we like to have some talking points, a presentation available, and of course, lots of pictures, so the parents know what that experience looks like. And just a couple pictures. This is from Bubble Day. The students actually make a mixture. They make their own bubbles. We use string and some straw, and they're able to blow their own bubbles. And then, what some teachers did is another connection is the kids spell their own name out of kind of like bubble letters. And then, our South Hempstead Fire Department, thank you again if anyone in here is a member of the South Hempstead Fire Department. We were very fortunate that the gentleman that came, they brought an ambulance, they brought a fire truck. They talked to the kids about fire safety. One of the real highlights of the program this year was that they brought in some probationary members, and they actually talked to the kids in normal clothes, and they slowly got dressed. And one of the fire prevention people were explaining what each piece of equipment was. And then, at the end, the students got to see what a firefighter looks like because they say one of the biggest challenges firefighters face is the students, children at a young age, they don't know what a firefighter looks like fully in equipment, and they kind of hear that, you know, raspy breathing through the mask, and they tend to hide a lot. And that was really something they wanted to hammer home was that if you see a person like this and they're smoking your house, this person's trying to help you. You shouldn't be hiding under your bed. And then, just some pictures of playing with other friends. We have sort of a free play, excuse me, every day where the kids, again, can socialize with each other. We mix up where there's more than one class outside on the playground each time, so it's not that... They have an opportunity to meet friends in their class, but also in another class as well. And then, our trip to the library, which is very funny. You would think the kids would be very excited to go get a library card and take out a book, but it's their first trip on a bus for most of them, and that is the absolute most exciting thing, that the yellow bus pulls up and they get to go on it is...
Do they cry then, or just when they leave with their parents?
They don't cry. They actually cry when the program's over. Thank you. That was for messing me up with the clicker. And then, one thing that we're very proud of in the pre-K program is our... At the end, we really have... We have a visitors' day where we invite one or two parents in at the end, or one or two special people. And it's just an opportunity to come in, and the students can sort of show off their crafts that they've been working on all year and just really kind of have that proud moment for themselves. I know there's not always opportunities for parents to get into the buildings on the elementary level, so this is just really gives our pre-K students a chance to kind of show off. That's it. Thank you very much.
Hi, everyone. I'm Chris Webster. I was the principal of the summer program. And I think I should start by thanking... Well, obviously, thanking the board for running these summer programs. That just gives so much more to these kids. You don't even know. I can get up here and talk about what these programs offer to the kids, but unless you walk through these programs, walk through these schools and see the smiles and the work and the excitement that goes on, it's a beautiful thing. So, I want to thank you for running those. Obviously, I want to thank Dr. Leahy for trusting me in this program. It was a brand-new thing for me. I've been in these summer programs for a couple of years now, and this was a brand-new... A little overwhelming, but I appreciate the trust and all of the support. And really want to thank Jim Duffy. I don't think he's here tonight, but Jim ran a phenomenal program for four years, and I was a little overwhelmed taking over and fitting into those big shoes. But I do have to say that for Jim, who was figuring out his own way as a new principal, I think he probably had enough on his to-do list every day without me calling him several times a day for more help. So, Jim was a big help. And none of these programs would have run if I didn't have Liz Preike and the custodians over there doing all their work. So, I think all those things are in order to start with. So, I'd like to say that...
Are you going to do that or my?
No, this... Look, this works. See?
Okay. What do you want here? This guy? This guy, right there? Let's see. Hey, look at that.
All right, well, this was Keith's program up there right now. And I just tried to put in a little comparison that last year, he had 123 students, and he grew that by another 30 students. We were able to add another class, which was really nice. His programs just keep getting bigger and bigger. The program that I was primarily responsible for the enrichment program at Hewlett, again, last year, we had 534 students, and we had 552. And I think that's just been a trend. Each year, those programs just keep getting bigger and bigger. We're getting to the point where we don't know where we're going to put them. It's Hewitt. Okay. Moving on. Moving on. Moving on. Our BRIDGE program, which stayed at Covert spelled correctly, remained the same. Our middle school program just grew just by two students. And what I do like to see is that the Regents' repeater program here at Southside High School actually went down by about 30 students, which is what we want to see happen with that program because it means that we're having more and more success with the students at the high school level. This was our staff overall. Keith had eight teachers. I had 37. Well, you can see, we attended the high school. Had a lot of aides and assistants in the programs, which worked out really well for us because we... In my program, and I believe in Keith's, we had an aide or an assistant in all the classes, which made life a little bit easier for all of the teachers. But also, we're very fortunate that a lot of the students in the programs needed one-on-ones, and we were able to make sure that they had one-on-ones to make them part of the program as well. One of the things I really did like about it is that we were able to hire almost 70 teenagers in the program. You know, we have... I just think it's a nice thing. We had these, you know, 15, 16-year-old kids working in these programs who were a big help to the program. And I just look at these little 3rd graders running around these hallways with these, you know, 11th and 12th graders, and they were like their heroes. And I think it was a great experience for the teenagers as well as for the young people, and I think a lot of people can speak to that. And then, we had 17 volunteers. Those are primarily 8th graders from the middle school who aren't getting paid for it, just are trying to get their feet wet. And obviously, when they come up next year, we try to find a place for all of them. So, it was really, you know, it was a community. I think it's really what it was all about. We kept on a lot of the same support personnel that we did in the past with the nurses, secretaries, and so on. So, that all has remained the same for all the additional services we need to provide. These were the tuitions we charged. You can see them up there for... It was $400 for in-district for the pre-K and the enrichment program. But we also had an early special. If they got in before a certain date, it was a little bit cheaper. I think it was $360. Fortunately, we didn't have to hire... We didn't have to charge families for the BRIDGE, the repeater, and the high school programs for those students. In the program that I was primarily in charge with the enrichment program, we ran a variety of classes from cooking to yoga to basketball to art classes to Dungeons and Dragons class, writing classes. I mean, we really had over 30 classes of everything. And these are the new classes. We had an animal rescuer's team where the kids learned a little bit about animals, how to rescue them. They were making flyers for dogs that needed to be adopted. We had dogs coming in and being shown around. We had a teacher this year want to run board games, which is the chess Scrabble. Escape the Classroom was a brand-new, unique one that we had a teacher run, which was a lot like those TV shows or whatever they were. And kids learned puzzles and teamwork, and that was a lot of fun. Musical Jumping Beans was primarily for kindergartners, and that was outside, running around with big colorful parachutes and that sort of stuff. Paul Sumantelli, one of the art teachers here at the high school, ran sort of a Dungeons and Dragons sort of class, which was nice because, you know, the program is good from kindergarten up through 8th grade. You don't get that many 7th and 8th graders in the program, but you do get some. And we got several boys who were very interested in that. And in fact, we changed it. There's supposed to be three one-hour classes. Paul asked... Mr. Sumantelli asked if we could change that so some of the boys in that class stayed for two, sometimes three sessions just because they were enjoying that so much. And then, we also had a teacher teaching how to draw faces. And so, we had a lot of different things going on this year. And I closed out of it. Which is... Everything is going swimmingly so far. I'm going to the grand finale. There might be one more on that. Yeah, I know there is.
It's a live show, so things happen.
I'll go to this orange one for a minute. And this is orange. Because I thought that everyone here, after spending hours, hours making a multimedia presentation with slides and background music and pictures of kids having all sorts of fun, I thought everyone would rather look at a block of orange. It worked yesterday in my house. It worked yesterday in three classrooms here. And now, it doesn't work. So, there is orange. So, I'm just going to take Keith's slides and pretend that those are the program that I ran in the... Anyway, can we go to the next one, please, Chris? We were still working with Nassau-Bosse's Regional Summer School, which provided us with a lot of opportunities in terms of teacher training, payroll, just being a big part of our program, which was a big, big help to all of us. We also... Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Rozeski. I have three teachers and a couple of students who would also like to say one or two words about the program. Is Stella Newhouse here? Okay. So, Stella was with... Stella was in an art class called Pinterest with Ms. Rab. I don't know if Ms. Rab could make it tonight? Okay. We also have Jess Whelan with her student Audrey, who were part of a writing class. And we also have Ms. Rozuski, who taught a photography class with one of her students, Charlotte. If you guys want to come up and say a couple of words?
Okay. I'm so happy to introduce Stella, who took perfectly interest. Can I take this microphone now? Here you go, honey.
Hi. My name is Stella Newhouse, and I'm in 4th grade at Covert School. I took perfectly Pinterest for the last two years, and I really enjoy it because we get to make so many fun projects. I got to make this tie-dye T-shirt, this flip-flop project, and this crayon project, which this is my favorite. is my favorite.
And hi again, my name is Jessica Whalen and Mr. Duffy begged me years ago to take on this summer ACE program and I haven't turned back. It's so amazing to see all the schools come together. You really see the community as a whole and I have to say, Mr. Webster took over this year and it was seamless. It seemed as if nothing had changed and that's just a thanks to our community. I have Audrey Morrow with me here today. I've been running this writing class for six, seven years with, the name has changed from Diary of an Awesome Kid to Write On, pun intended, and the kids absolutely love the program. What I love to see is kids who come in with their preconceived notions of whether they love writing or don't like writing and mom made them take it because they have two football classes and by the end, they all love it. I think when you take away the stigma, the fear, and just show the love of reading and writing immersed and give the children opportunities to just freely think, connect the visual arts, and really listen to one another and collaborate, they learn to love writing and as a teacher, nothing could make me more happy. So Audrey is one of my students, who I am lucky to have this year, but she's taken the class for four years in a row. That's the other beauty. I have some seventh graders who, once they take the class, to see them taking writing classes every single year is really unbelievable, so I'm gonna let Audrey say a few words, she's certainly earned it, and there you go.
Hi, I'm Audrey. I started taking this class in first grade and I'm now in fifth grade. What I liked about this class is the amazing teacher, Ms. Whalen, and the way her class enriched my writing process. In the class, there is no such thing as mistakes, which allowed me to be creative and not worry about doing something wrong.
And there's just a small slideshow running, but that, yes, there we go. It really just shows you a sampling of what the kids are able to do and connecting to the social-emotional piece, I have it up here with me, I'm just holding it up here. Something that's so simple, we have so many amazing technology programs that our district provides us and professional development, but even just pen and paper, using emojis and putting faces on and labeling words has been so powerful for our kids to label their feelings, identify their feelings, and just become aware. So it's very, very simple things that you're seeing up here, but the connections that they make, the conversations they have are really timeless, so I cannot thank this community enough for providing this experience for our kids. Very thankful. Thank you to the board. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Monica Jefsky and I've taught three years at the ACE program, teaching summer photo fun, which we use iPads to take pictures. I also do encourage the students, if they have a phone or an iPod, they can use that too. So it's digital photography and I start with the basics, point of view, how to find beauty in shadows, lines, textures, and then eventually we get into the fun stuff like photojournalism. They visit the other classes and they put on their little photojournalism hats and they're reporters. And then eventually, we also use bubbles and chalk and we take pictures of just all this kind of color and beauty. And I've noticed now that I have students who have taken the class at least three times, so I think it's time for an advanced photo class where they, I encourage the students who've been in now the basic, will now do the advanced photo and we're gonna do more, you know, I plan on doing storyboards, learn how to do a group photo and just, I just keep on making a list of ideas. So I have, you know, here we have the writer who has it on there and I have an actual tangible thing, but I did make a book, which I'll pass around to you guys. The cool thing is the kids can share the pictures on Seesaw, which I know a lot of the elementary parents are aware of, and then they can talk about their pictures, so they develop the language of not just saying, "Ooh, cool picture." I encourage them to actually say, "Oh, that's a great bird's eye view picture," and they really do start to use the vocabulary that I show them. And I have Ms. Charlotte Webster over here, who has taken the class and was fabulous and she's gonna talk to you a little about it too.
So I really enjoyed the class because we get to learn how to take different types of pictures and how you can see how other people take pictures and I learned a lot from it and every day when I came home, I showed all my friends the pictures I took and these are some of the pictures I took.
So she's got here, we did texture, I think that's your example of texture. And she has, we do photo sculpt, like paper sculptures that we photograph to show form. Oh, and she, this weird thing, Charlotte was one of those great students who just like went off on her own and did great amazing things. So we made shadows and she has a little peace sign here. And we actually do go out in the rain sometimes, because we do have summer rains and it's really great because the kids are, you know, we don't go in the pouring rain, but I'm like, okay, now let's look at reflections of the puddles and then they tap their foot into the puddles and make ripples and it comes out really cool. And then, of course, the playground is such a great space for them to have fun and explore new angles like bird's eye view and they just, they really do work together, especially when it comes to photographing each other. Portraiture is something that I say, "Hey, guys, this is where the money is," so I encourage them to really take that part seriously, especially with the photojournalism as well, if eventually they want to herald photographers or something like that. So yeah, Charlotte, you can pass these around, Charlotte's personal ones too, but thank you.
So in a mad scramble, when I got here and our multimedia thing wasn't working, we were able to quick put together, cobble together a couple of pictures if we could, Mr. Pelter, Dr. Pelter. Does this still work on this? All right, this is animal rescuer's team, this animal rescuer's team, they were making brochures about dogs who needed to be adopted. This was the Dungeons and Dragons class. The board games class. This was the, again, the animal rescuer's team with one of the rescue dogs, they were trying to get adopted. This was musical jumping beans, this was a lot of fun, they throw the parachute up in the air and the teacher would say, "Okay, if you know what, if two plus two equals three, run underneath the parachute." Nobody would run under it, so she was teaching them math skills and stuff while having a lot of fun. This was our outdoor boot camp class. One of our food-making classes, these were very popular, they sold out in the first day. We had two food classes that everyone wanted to get into cooking, we just didn't have the space for them. Another one of the cooking classes, cooking class. This is our basketball class outside. This was on Ms. Rzeszowski's photography class. You can see just everyone with big smiles on their faces, boy, I wish my multimedia worked. One of our art classes, another art class. This was the great egg drop in our steam class where the teacher and the kid, you've heard of this, designed containers so they could drop an egg out the window and it wouldn't break, don't worry, only the teacher was actually dropping the eggs off and I was down at the bottom watching, making sure. This is our steam junior class and this was our steam junior class, making volcanoes outside, that is a volcano erupting there in the front. And that might be as many as we could cobble together. So I just want to again, thank everyone and thank everyone for registering for the classes and thanking the teachers for doing such a great job. It's just so exciting to see people teaching something outside of their element and as you may know, a lot of our classes relied on technology, which for the last two weeks or so of the program, we had very little technology in the program. But that kind of tells you what a good teacher is, because all these teachers who were coming in expecting to be able to use technology, internet and so on, weren't able to do it, but they were still running these classes like it was nothing. And as for myself, whenever I had a free time, which was all the time, whenever I had a free moment, it was just nice just to walk through these halls and look in these classes and see all the great stuff going on, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're gonna move on to Community Education Program Annual Review.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask Norine again to do it, do the introductions.
So it's hard to decide which one of these programs is more fun to watch grow. Community Ed leadership has been tremendous as well. Mr. Christie Ambrosio has been the Community Ed Director now for a couple of years. He ran it again in 1819 and continues to in 1920. Community Ed includes adult education, which is an opportunity for adults in the community to take classes in their free time. Winter ACE, which is another opportunity for our students on Saturday morning, six Saturdays in the winter, to participate in a variety of classes. Regions Prep, which gets our students ready to take the regions exams in the spring, and then also Project Great. Project Great is coordinated by Mr. Joe Galena, who's a teacher at Covert, and so both of them are here to talk to you about their programs.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, hello. So Project Great, it is, if we could go to the... So Project Great is the before and after-school program that operates in all five of the elementary schools. It begins at 7:00 AM in the, for the morning program and, oh, let me go to that first. Okay, perfect. So it begins at 7:00 AM and it runs to 8:50 every day. The children are offered a healthy breakfast, usually consisting of yogurt, whole grain cereals, waffles, pancakes, fresh fruit, juices, and then they're given a chance to play. And to kind of echo the sentiment about, you know, having social-emotional learning piece, you know, the opportunity that these children have to play with each other before school begins, it's nice and they build that community and you do have children of different age levels playing together. And one of the things they learn is how to make their own rules. Not every game is a structured game. And you could tell the Project Great kids at recess tend to have fewer problems because they're used to working together and coming up with a common goal so that they could have fun in the short time that they have in the morning. So that is the morning program. The afternoon program, we have two different registration bands, so to speak. We have a 3:30 to 5:00 and we have a 3:30 to 6:30 and that also runs in all five of the elementary schools. So upon dismissal, the students are brought to a common location and after attendance is taken, they're provided with a healthy snack and then they get to the homework help. So regardless if you're registered till 5:00 or 6:30, you're offered homework help, which is under the direction of the coordinator, who is a certified teacher. And at that point, they break into their small groups and the staff work together to provide that homework help. When they complete their homework, they also have a chance to play various games, arts and crafts. Sometimes kids just like to read a book quietly, but we give them that space to do that. High school helpers, I know that Mr. Webster was talking about how the high school students work the summer program and how the kids idolize them. Well, the same thing happens at Project Great. The high school students volunteer their time, they come after school, they help with the homework, they play games with the children. And one of the things that's really neat about these homework helpers from the high school is that most of them are former Project Great students and they really look forward coming back to their home school to help kids that were in a similar situation that they were. You know, Project Great is there for working families to help out, you know, in the morning and after school and when families have to get to work. So, you know, where these children may not always want to be where they are, having these high school helpers come out and play and show them games and leadership, it gives them something that they aspire to and I get many emails about former students that were attending Project Great so that they could come and volunteer their time. Okay, the enrollment numbers are a little small, but we are, we're up 160 students from the 1718 to the 1819 school year, which is tremendous growth, which is a testament to possibly the economy or kids just love the program so much that they're begging their parents to register and they're coming in. One of the new things that has been added was the as-needed students. It was under Jim Duffy who started that and that number has been the largest increase. The as-needed is kind of that emergency in a pinch, "I'm running late, can I please send my child to a safe place where they're gonna get a snack and do their homework?" And Project Great offers that for them. And now I'm gonna pass it over to Chris Ambrosio.
Okay, so hello, everybody, I'm Christie Ambrosio, Director of Community Education. The first program that I would like to speak about is Winter ACE. Also in Community Ed, we have Adult Education and Regions Review. Oops, wrong way. Sorry. Yes. There we go. So the ACE program, I have to say, is my favorite program to run and similar to Mr. Webster's experience, it's nice being a high school teacher to be in the elementary schools and seeing the little kids and hearing their little voices and their feet and it just gives you a whole different look at education and being with the kids. But the ACE program is a wonderful program for the winter months. It gives the kids something to do on the cold days in the winter, to do something indoors. And we offer lots of different programs, similar to the summer program, in science and art and sports. And they get to pick two classes, it's a little smaller scaled than the summer program. It runs from 9:00 to 11:00 and each class is 55 minutes. And again, the parents could, or children could pick two classes. Over the last few years, enrollment has really went up. Okay, in 2017, you can see we had 77 kids, 2018 went up to 107 and 2019 up to 184. And part of that contribute to speaking to the parents, speaking to administrators, finding out what type of classes the kids want and the parents would like to see in the program. And we introduced a lot of steam-based classes. And we also, to, you know, the name of the department is Community Education, so we went out to the community also to offer classes. And if you look at the fourth bullet, we had School of Rock, Drama Kids, Terrarium Bar, Dance Workshop, and the Arts Studio came in. School of Rock was a huge success, the kids loved it and interestingly enough, they came in with just buckets and they were making music just by beating the drums in the buckets. We have art classes, cooking, the science classes, we had, filled up so quick, we had a, I had to scramble to get more teachers to teach, to open up second science classes. We have Hofstra with coding and we did something new with coding last year where we opened it up for, instead of just having a 55-minute class, we opened it up for the full two hours. So trying to get the middle school kids more involved in the Winter ACE program. And we had about 15 kids in the coding class and they were learning something called So another new thing we did was we tried to ask neighboring communities to be involved in the Winter ACE program. We reached out to Lynbrook and East Rockaway School District, we tried to get their teachers involved to teach programs along with us. We had their students and we printed flyers for their elementary school buildings and tried to get their kids involved and we had a little bit of an increase in enrollment. We had, I think, about 20 students from Lynbrook and about five from East Rockaway. We also advertised on the school, the district channel, we created a commercial for Winter ACE, we went around, we had the TV kids at the high school go around with the video cameras and videoing the kids in the different programs, we have that playing on the Rockville Center School Channel. We also advertise on the Rockville Center Train Station ticker and St. Agnes also we advertise for. And by offering many different types of enrichment classes, we've seen an increase. So just by diversing our classes and incorporating new things, I think got kids excited to take the program. All right, so Adult Education, we offer two sessions, one in the spring, one in the fall and one in the spring. And these are held two nights a week, Mondays and Wednesdays, and we offer a whole variety of different classes for adults, ranging going from cooking to financial classes and, I'm sorry, let me get my notes. Financial classes, cooking classes, arts and craft type classes, we even had music classes, so, and parents, adults seem to enjoy getting out of the house and learning something and meeting new people. So for the fall in 2018, we had 111 people, 15 classes. In the spring, we had 13 classes with 76 adults. We also incorporate senior varsity, so we have classes running at the Senior Center and Rockville Center as well. So we advertise also, we created another commercial that we play on the Rockville Center School Channel. We email parents, we print a brochure that gets mailed out to everybody in the district and also on the ticker and at the train station and we utilize social media, Facebook. Regions Review is the last program, that runs in May, it goes Monday to Thursday for five weeks and these are, these classes are designed to prep students for the upcoming regions exams in June. So here are the list of classes that ran this past spring. And so it's a total of 10 sessions. We had this year, we didn't even advertise in other districts, we had kids from Valley Stream, East Rockaway, Malvern, Rockville Center, obviously, and Baldwin. And you could see... And you can see the enrollment numbers here from 2017 to 2019. So, they, and this year, with, just to back up with Winter Ace, we're in the process now of registering for this Winter Ace program, and the numbers are approaching what we had last year as well. And that's it for community ed. Thank you.
Thank you so much for all your hard work, everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you to the kids who came to show us their beautiful work. Great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, yes. The photos and the book, okay.
These are fabulous. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Beautiful. Thank you so much.
Chris, thank you very much.
Great job. Thank you, Chris.
Okay, we're going to move on to a discussion about the 2020-21 and 21-22 district calendars. Just to be clear, we always have a discussion in December, and then we vote in January. So, this is the time where we put out the versions of calendars, and we have a discussion in public, talking through some ways that we fit in all the day. So, Dr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you very much. You actually, or I will repeat what you... Now, the process is a simple one. We do have that discussion in December, and we do make a recommendation for consideration for that, particularly for the following year. Even though we're going to be taking a look at two years of calendars tonight, we really ask the board to make a decision in January on the upcoming school year calendar. There is a committee that works each year. It's chaired by Mr. Bartels. It includes various staff members from different bargaining units. It includes parents as well. And what we try to do is put together a calendar that makes sense to all of the groups that are involved. At the end of the day, this year, as you can see, we ended up with two calendars. The one that was recommended to us by the committee itself was the one which begins prior to Labor Day in September. Next year and the following year, Labor Day is late. And so, consequently, when that happens, we have the opportunity of having children return to us even in September, but prior to the Labor Day weekend. We have traditionally, in this school district, open school after Labor Day. We, from time to time, have, in fact, taken a look at, and in some years, had to consider opening in September but before Labor Day, and we've done so. So, I mean, it won't be the first time that something like that has happened. I will tell you that in the school year 21-22, the likelihood of us opening after Labor Day is very, very slim because of the number of holidays and where they fall. So, just for the board's information, as you know, there are three days in play. What we've done is to suggest that in September, we open for students on that Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday prior to Labor Day. And in the subsequent calendar, what we would do is take a look at, if we do that, by the way, what happens is the day before Thanksgiving, and then two days that are wrapped around the Memorial Day weekend, in fact, are off, the Friday and the Tuesday. That would create a five-day weekend. One of the reasons for doing that, by the way, and one of the reasons why we always consider it, is we try to push some of those holidays into the spring because in the event that we have a difficult winter and have to call off school for a number of days and have difficulty meeting the requirements of the state, what we are able to do then is to take those days back without interrupting any of the major holidays and vacation periods that we have either in February or around Easter Passover. The other calendar starts after Labor Day, and the three days that I just mentioned to you, the one before Thanksgiving, and the two days that are wrapped around Memorial Day are eliminated from that calendar. So, I know it has created lots of discussion, and there may be questions that the board may have. I'm not sure if you want to get involved very heavily into the 21-22 school year, but as you can see, the holidays that appear in September on the 7th and the 8th really, in fact, create a difficult time for us as the year progresses. Those are traditionally days that we have had as holidays. I don't see how we can do anything but open prior to the Labor Day weekend. So, at any rate, I don't know if Mr. Bartels, if there's any comment that you would have that...
All right, you covered everything.
Yeah, all right. I've learned well. So, members of the board, I don't know if there are any questions that you may have about what I have just kind of summarized for you.
Yeah. Well, first of all, thank you to the calendar committee, because I know they take their time to look through this. And I know there's so many factors we have to look into. You know, you build in snow days, I know. You front-load some so that we don't start losing vacation time, and that's considered. Try to find good balance for holidays that we give. And again, looking ahead, I think next year, well, the 21-22 is a little bit more of a problem because we run into Jewish holidays as soon as we start Labor Day. My personal impression with this version was that we didn't have that same kind of force happening in the 2021 school year. So, I would question why we would not just start after Labor Day. I think having those May dates, that's a nice five-day break, and it's days to lose if it snows or we go over four days. But that could be problematic, I think, for high schoolers studying as well at that time of year, to have a five-day break in May. That could be a little disruptive. And I think it's disruptive for the students to go back personally before Labor Day if we don't need to do it. So, I'm just curious if we had considered how we got to, you know, getting, looking at before Labor Day in this particular instance.
Yeah, when we talked about it, as Dr. Johnson said, some of the key things were the snow days and where those fell, as well as the day before Thanksgiving. So, also feeling that because we would still be starting in September, even, you know, before Labor Day, that it was still, you know, kind of okay to pursue that.
And it looks like both calendars end on the 25th. You're not gaining anything on the back end. Sometimes people say you start later, you end earlier. Start sooner, end sooner? It doesn't happen that way here.
Yeah, the end of the school is determined by the state.
Did we go up the mic later? Does anybody want to comment from the board on...
I would just say that historically, the community has requested that we start after Labor Day unless we absolutely cannot. And looking at this calendar, I mean, you could even take December 23rd if you want to move a day around and take, pick up the day before Thanksgiving holiday or something like that. There is, there seems to be enough room in this calendar to start after Labor Day.
I agree. Yeah.
Yeah, and it does follow, for the most part, our tradition is after Labor Day, but we do need to make everybody aware that next year, we may be looking at a totally different thing. So, as the public came to us this year, like, how could you do it? We may have to do it the following school year. So, just to keep, everybody keep that in mind.
Yep.
So, it's not a shock to the system. It seems like we can start after Labor Day pretty comfortably.
Yeah, agreed.
Next year is the question.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. So, we'll continue that conversation. We'll look at that, to finalize that in January then?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, we're doing an update on the National Junior Honor Society trip.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm going to ask that Sheila provide us with a, Sheila McGinn, who is the principal of Southside Middle School, provide us with a summary of the reasons. We have, for the last five years, run into some serious logistical issues related to the provision of a Washington, DC trip for children who participate in the Washington, I mean, in the National Junior Honor Society. It reached almost a critical stage this year. We continually revisit it each year, and I think that at this time, we've had numerous discussions, Dr. Pelletieri, myself, Sheila, members of the middle school staff, have all contributed to the sense and feeling that this is the time when we need to really reconsider this opportunity for some very, very good reasons. And to take a look at other very positive experiences that we can provide to students in the 7th grade or to students who participate in the National Honor Society and have a culminating, wonderful event for all of the 8th graders as they begin to take a look at the high school and just prior to the time that they move up in the ceremony over at Southside Middle School. So, Sheila, if you don't mind, providing us a little bit more detail, and then we would entertain any questions that the board may have.
So, first, I'd like to just start by saying I do understand change is hard. And I do understand that there, that students have friends and siblings that have gone on this trip in the past. And I think that in looking at it through just the lens of the trip and going to Washington, DC, it is a wonderful thing. If that is the only lens that is being looked through. But when you look at it through the lens which we at the middle school have to look through, it's the whole picture. It's not just the students in the National Junior Honor Society, it's the other 700-and-something students that are at school. So, just to explain some of the logistical issues that occur each year. Number one is getting the number of chaperones that are able to go. This year, we really should have, and I'm totally confessing in front of the Board of Education, there might be a letter in my file, but we should have sent 18. We couldn't send 18. We only had 16 chaperones. We had 183 kids. Board policy is 1 to 10. Sorry. But we could only get 16. Of those 16, some of them were 6th and 7th grade teachers. So, the students in the 6th and 7th grade had to have teachers that were not their content-specific, that were not their grade level. The instruction is incredibly compromised during those three days that we run this trip. In addition, this year, in order to get that 16th chaperone, we sent the 6th grade guidance counselor because she doesn't need a sub. But that also meant that all of those new 6th graders that were in school on that for that three days didn't have, their transition was a little bit rougher because some, we don't know them all as well, the guidance counselor knows them the best, but we didn't, we couldn't get another teacher, and she volunteered to go. In addition, we have an uptick in discipline because the numbers of kids who, you know, this some may find funny, but I think the 6th grade learned that if you roll up toilet paper, it sticks to the ceiling in the boys' bathroom. That happened during the trip. It's never happened again, and it didn't happen before. And it's because of change in routine. Change for everyone is hard to handle. In addition to all of those, like, logistical things, the trip itself, there's social-emotional component for the kids that are going, the kids that are roommates in, before the summer, and all of a sudden, they get dropped out of having a roommate when it comes to September, and who's crying over where, the safety concerns in the rooms themselves. There were things, which I will not share, which I found out after the trip, and this has happened three consecutive years, that if something had happened on that trip, we would have been in a lot of trouble. Because you have 13-year-olds, four of them in a room, playing hide-and-seek, and nothing good comes of that. And things like that have happened. The buses were so crowded, problems with the bathrooms. That's all one part, and that's all just the trip itself. It's everybody back at home that's also suffering. There's also the security issue. In this day and age, we're sending our students, and I feel really strongly about this, we're sending our students to Washington, DC where what we see shootings, we hear about violence all the time. And for three days, I hold my breath and hope they all come back safe. I hope the buses don't break down. I hope that everybody stays safe. This year, thank goodness, no one got sick because there wasn't a chaperone to stay back with the kids. We didn't have a floater. So, these are all the different concerns in addition to the fact that the kids come with a lot now. Aside from their cell phones and all of that, they also come with a lot of medicine. So, we have teachers who are responsible for making sure, every chaperone had a backpack full of EpiPens and such. And then, back at home, we had less of the nurse because we had to send someone on the trip. We had the, again, the subs. We didn't have subs. So, we had kids that were in the auditorium. Never in my life have we put kids in the auditorium until this year. And I would walk in and say to them, "All right, I don't want you playing games. What's your independent reading? What are you going to do now?" But they were in the auditorium. And for some kids, they were in the auditorium two or three times in a day or every day of those three days. And then, there's also, of course, the equity issue. Why can't the entire 8th grade go? I'm always asked that. Why don't you just send all 302 of them? That would take 30 chaperones. That would take a shutdown of the entire school. That would take over a hotel. Like, it's impossible. It's clearly impossible. So, what we're looking to do is, what we'd like to do is to have, for the 8th grade, we start the year a challenge day. We put all the kids together. We have this big unity-building day. We pull it through the year. We have activities throughout the year that keep the kids talking to each other, seeing each other, understanding each other. And then, we end it in the, well, we don't end. But in the beginning of May, we have a big, full-day activity, like, I keep calling it ski-trip hours, like, you leave before school and you come home seven or eight at night, and we go somewhere fun. And it's open to every member of Southside Middle School 8th grade. And we go for the day. And we're thinking of different trips like Club Getaway, or maybe Rockin' Horse Ranch, or something like that, just fun, again, community-building, ropes courses, things like that, to bring them together before they then move on to whatever high school they're going to. The other piece of that, for the National Junior Honor Society, and I think we need to go back to the stigma, not the stigma, the status of the Junior Honor Society shouldn't be the Washington, DC trip. It should be the status of making the grade to be in the National Junior Honor Society. And there are kids who make a 92.4, and they don't make the society. And then, they don't go on the trip. And then, we don't go on any trip. But there are also kids who, when they make that National Junior Honor Society, we have a beautiful ceremony, and then afterwards, we're going to give them something fun. I'm not exactly sure where, but a trip that's just for the Junior Honor Society, like any club can take any trip to take for a day. And again, we're going to give them an extended day trip somewhere, I don't know, Dorney Park, Hershey Park, something. And that's in the works now. And Ms. Riley was going to talk to some of the, we were going to talk to the 7th grade students to talk about things that they think maybe we should put into the hopper for discussion. Did I cover everything?
A couple of things that did come up in conversations with us. The staycation, in other words, the day trips that you plan for the kids who don't go on the trip. What we have to understand is that instruction, certainly for the 8th graders, comes to a halt for those three days for everybody. So, what we've tried to do is to create a whole variety of different activities, which also takes away teachers, aides, and others who might otherwise, even though they don't want to go away on the DC trip, they still need to work as chaperones during those days. And so, what that does is even create an additional. So, we're up to somewhere between 30 and 35 people in that building assigned to chaperone duty during the time that the DC trip is underway.
And we pull everyone for those chaperones. We've sent security.
Right.
We've sent, which, again, then, what about the other 700 kids that are back at school?
Right. So, the other is, we saw a real spike in absenteeism during this period of time. 36 to 38 kids on each one of those days never showed up for school.
Didn't come to school at all.
Right. And the last thing, of course, not that it's prohibitive, but cost continues to rise each year. And, you know, at what point do we consider it prohibitive? A real factor, and distinguishing those who can or cannot go, between the haves and the have-nots. So, it's, that in and of itself is becoming a problem. So, all of those things, we have been discussing. I mean, this is, this is not new. We've been approaching this every, almost every year.
Every year.
The reason why we believe it's somewhat critical at this point is that we have literally reached the point where we are concerned that we may, and we can't guarantee this trip anymore. We don't know when the chaperones are going to be able to give us a guarantee that they will go. We do not want to reach the point where the kids are on the verge of going, only to find out that we don't have enough chaperones to say and say, "Okay, that's it. Either we have to cut back to a number of kids who can be covered by the chaperones or, in fact, cancel the trip for everybody." So, that, it's, there's a critical mass with regard to a number of factors that we believe warrant consideration this year of alternatives for both the 7th grade kids who make it... it and also for the entire eighth-grade kids before they move up to the high school.
Which all involves this year's seventh grade.
Yes, that's right.
It all involves this year's seventh grade.
Correct.
Current seventh grade.
Sheila, how do you have the chaperones for the whole eighth grade to go on a day trip?
It's a day trip.
So it's less chaperones?
No, it's not that it's less chaperones. It's just that you're, when they're going on the, on the three days, right, they're willing to go. And I don't mean that to sound like, oh, they're unwilling. It's not like that. But you're asking people to give up three days of their lives. You know, we've had people who've done it for a few years, then they got married and had babies and they can't do it anymore. Then we've had people who raised their children and then said, "Oh, I'll do it this year." So it's, it's the, a day trip, people can do, will easily do a day trip. I'm not concerned about that. And this discussion has gone on within the middle school with many of the teachers, with many, many, you know, wanting, the teachers also would like the three days of instruction back. You know, we're always pushed for time. We never have enough time. And we take three days of instruction away from the eighth grade and away from the sixth and seventh grades to a very large extent as well.
Sheila, I like the idea of you saying to talk to the seventh-grade kids because to me, and when this was first brought out, my first reaction was, "The seventh graders, how do you do that? They've been working towards it and to take that away." And I think a lot of parents felt that as well. So I think that there has to be that thought as well. And when you're making those decisions, thinking that that really affects these students.
And that, we wanted to, we'll do a lunch study assembly. If you don't know what a lunch study assembly is, that's how we take, we speak with the kids during their study period and it's half of a grade at a time. And so we want to have a lunch study assembly, I was waiting for this first, but have a lunch study assembly with the kids to discuss, give them all the real facts, because anyone who has come to me, I give them the real reasons of what's happening as opposed to, you know, middle school rumor mill, which is big. But giving them those reasons and then offering to ask if there are kids that want to be on the committee to discuss the Junior Honor Society trip, to discuss the big, the eighth-grade trip, the full eighth-grade trip. Challenge Day is happening. It's going to happen at the end of September again, like we did this year, like that's in the books. Thank you to the PTA for helping us fund it. And then, but to just have a committee with them to discuss the two bits. And we'll still have our induction ceremony and they'll still, you know, when kids, when kids are in the National Junior Honor Society, when they go to apply for something like Camp Anchor, or they go to apply to work at the rec center, or they go for a job, or they go to a different school and they're going to a private school, they never write on their resume, "I went to DC." They write that they were a member of the National Junior Honor Society and they write about the community and service that they've done to reach the pillars that are, you know, part of the society. So I think we need to get back to that also.
One of the things too, I know started to float was parents kind of throwing their hand in the air and saying, "I'll go, you know, I'll be a chaperone." But I think we have to own that as a school district, that's not something we've typically done, especially for overnight trips. You know, our teachers are vetted, they're fingerprinted, they, you know, they have their jobs that they're accountable for and we love our parents, but that's a huge responsibility for parents to take on. I think we should acknowledge that it's not that we wouldn't want extra help, but we couldn't possibly ask parents to be chaperones for something like that for three days. It's just, it's an enormous responsibility and, and possible liability for the district as well.
And there's also a privacy issue to that. I mentioned before that many of the students have different medications that they need to take. Well, that's a privacy issue that the teacher has taken on confidentiality to know who's, needs to receive whatever medication it is. That's one piece. The second piece is the social-emotional piece. So if I'm Johnny's mom and I'm with my group and I'm in charge of these 10 kids and I holler at Joey, and this could be a boy or a girl, I'm not being gender, it's just they usually hang out together, boys and girls in the middle school, I mean, as boys, as girls. But, and then I holler at Joey, now maybe Johnny doesn't have a seat at the lunch table when we get back because his mother is such a brat. Like, that's that other part also with middle school kids. And as all of the things that you just said, you know, I think it needs to, if it, run by teachers, but we don't have them. Agreed.
On the one-day trip, would, would you consider parents?
No offense to all the parents in the room, but we won't need you.
I have to say, I love the Washington, DC trip. But I, but, but change happens. And I, and I think what Dr. Johnson said is right on. We've been talking about this for at least five years.
2014 till now, every year.
So you came here and we had a whole conversation about changing it. And one of the big things when we were very close to doing it then, because the idea of having an entire eighth-grade trip instead of just a two-thirds eighth-grade trip was very strong, but we just weren't there. And I have to say, yeah, I think, you know, it's a very good argument and time.
Thank you.
It has been years and years and we've always sent you back, make it happen, make it happen.
Make it work. And I cried for the last three years, I promise I did. You can ask Jen, she's right there. Didn't we cry? We cried. We cried.
You know, Sheila, there was one other thing, and the board should be aware of this, and I think you already are, we've had this discussion before. We certainly have this discussion more frequently than I would like. There is a real teacher shortage. And what is happening to us right now is that we have many fewer people applying for jobs than we did before. But where this intersects with the whole issue with regard to the supervision, both in school and as on these trips, is that we can't get subs. And when you try to get subs to cover three days, there is just no way that we can do that. So the instructional opportunities that Sheila was just saying that are interrupted and cause us in, to place kids in the auditorium are going to increase in number. So just, it's, it's another one of those factors that are contributing to our decision at this point to recommend that we discontinue that trip and move on to two other really, what I think to be wonderful opportunities for our kids.
Agreed.
I'm just going to open the mic for any specific questions about DC. If you would like to ask a question, you can go to this podium over here and just mention your name and your address. Oh, wherever you want. This is just going to be for Washington, DC questions only and we're going to open the mic again later for other questions, if anybody has any.
Hi, I'm Karen Tolleson, 261 Lakeview Avenue. So I have a seventh-grade daughter. She's the third, so she's heard about the great experience her older sister and brother have had. And I think what she finds to be most frustrating is that they are already on their way to being in the National Junior Honor Society. Their grades have counted for a few semesters and when she'll say, she'll, at the dinner table, say she got a 98 on something and my older son will say, "That doesn't matter, you're in seventh grade." And she will say, "It does matter because I'm going to make the Junior National Honor Society and then I get to go to DC." And so to me, it feels like this is something that should be grandfathered in, maybe start with the fifth graders who are in fifth grade now so that there's a warning. And is there, I, so I don't know about how schools are funded as far as the ability to find out-of-district subs, but like, is it the kind of thing that if each family paid an extra $30 for the trip, could we pay for subs to come for those three days? Like, is there a way to make this work?
We've done a number of different studies with other school districts with the substitute issue and some pay considerably more than we do here in Rockville Center. It is not a matter of money. The subs are just not there. And for us to be able to get subs, whether they would accompany our kids on this trip or in fact come to the school district and, and teach in place with somebody who would then go on the trip, is a severe problem that we have not been able to solve. And I don't want to be in a position, as we get even closer to the date, and we have fewer teachers, by the way, who are interested in going away for three days, for a whole variety of different reasons, we don't have to get into them. But I, all I can tell you is that, that pool of people interested in accompanying the kids on this three-day trip are shrinking. So that, in combination with the fact that we can't cover our classes in the school, is creating what we consider to be a problem that needs to be addressed now, not, not two years down the road. We really have a problem right now.
Is there no way to, because it's more than a year away, this trip? Like, there's no way to?
No, it's not. It's, it's, oh, yes.
I'm sorry, it's for the seventh grade.
Oh, you mean, yes, no, yeah, next fall.
It would be next fall.
It just, I come from, I guess, the private sector, but it just seems like if with that much advanced notice, you still cannot identify people who could come into the building or, I, it just seems like there's.
In all honesty, if you take a look at some of the issues that came up during the time that the trip was on this year, we couldn't cover classes this year. It really was a problem. And we really had to, for the most part, shut down a good part of our instructional program for sixth, seventh, and virtually all of eighth grade. So what, why, why would we do that? This trip, and I understand in prior years, we were able to logistically figure out ways in which we could cover it. There was a much larger pool of people who were interested in coming here and working as substitutes. We didn't have the security issues that we have, we didn't have the other staff members that we needed, we didn't have the medications, we didn't have all of the other issues that we have to deal with now on these trips. Each, each dimension of which creates a problem for somebody saying, "No, I'm not going to go this year." And so we've reached that critical mass and that's why we're coming to the community and to the Board of Education. We didn't want to be there, but we have to deal with the reality of what the world is presenting to us right now. And I don't think we can wait. And I don't want to be in the position of disappointing a daughter and then not having an alternative for these kids for next year if, in fact, we can't pull this trip off.
Is there any way to have like a couple-month, like, respite to see if we can problem-solve, maybe have some parents come in? I mean, do, is there any possibility of it being changed?
You know, the answer to that is in, maybe in the private sector, you can do that. In the public sector, we can't guarantee, we don't know who our substitutes are going to be. I mean, they are per diem subs. I can't go out and identify those people who would then come into the school district for three days next year at this point in time. And so the logistical issue that we're talking about arrives on our, on our doorstep almost the night before. And we try as best we can, even our permanent subpopulation in the middle school and the high school, we can't find permanent subs. They're just nonexistent. So it's, it's all I can tell you is that I, I wish I could say that we, we could postpone this decision and say, "Wouldn't it be wonderful to do it next year or the year after and start with the fifth grade?" I am really concerned about, about putting, I won't say at risk, but putting this trip at risk by not being able to deliver on what we are promising to kids. And I think what Sheila has proposed to us is a wonderful opportunity for kids, it still can be very motivating for kids, but although we are all in agreement, by the way, within the school, that the motivating factor should be participation in the Junior National Honor Society, not going on a Washington trip. So I understand it's a bonus.
Absolutely, but that is, I mean, but absolutely, but that is what.
I think you're trying to have us acknowledge, and I, and I think we should acknowledge, that this current seventh grade are the ones that are directly impacted by us changing this. And I, I totally understand that. And that, that is the group of kids that I think we feel the most for, truthfully. Because it's so hard to hear, "We really can't do this trip anymore." So it's so hard to say, "Okay, we'll squeeze out one more year." So we're in this weird spot. However, that doesn't mean that that should make these kids feel better because it just can't happen. I mean, we have to own the fact that these seventh graders are in this position to have felt that they were working for this goal. And I think we can work with Mrs. McGinn to try to find ways to help that. I know it's not going to make every child happy that they're not going on this trip and they are going to be disappointed, but I do think we should acknowledge that because that's what you're really saying. You want us to understand how these kids are feeling and we, and that's what we should care about. So I think we can work with Mrs. McGinn and Dr. Leahy and figure out how we can roll out a new plan in a way that the children feel good about because I think that that's what's wrong right now, is that, I think other kids in the future would be disappointed too, but right now, it's the seventh grade.
And just one more comment. I also think that having the two nights overnight, it sounds like it's probably problematic, but for children's growth, like, that was a real growth experience for both of my children who, and my youngest is already, they've been having extra sleep-overs, they're getting used to not being like with the parents that they know as well. Like, it's a big deal and it may sound silly, but I think it really helped my older two to feel a little bit independent, like they can be away and survive and come back and.
We, we understand all of that and we empathize with you and with these parents. We feel awful about having to, to do that. This is the last thing in the world that we wanted to do was to sit here in this room and say, "We can't do it." I'm just, I'm just telling you that on the basis of all of the information that we have collected, examining all of the variables that are connected to the instructional program in the middle school in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and the trip itself, we really had our backs to the wall and felt very put upon to come back to the Board of Education with a recommendation to, to provide a really wonderful experience, but this overnight trip is, is a real problem that we can't solve.
Not having chaperones is, is a scary prospect for me, not sending less chaperones than needed. And if we can't get the chaperones, then that kind of sells it for me that it's, you know, it's, it's not something that we should be doing. We shouldn't be sending that many kids with those, those few adults. And if there's, nobody wants to step up, we can't, we can't make that happen anyway. And we're not going to send a sub-teacher with, with 10 students who they've never done anything with.
Who they don't know.
That doesn't work. The teachers need to have a connection to the students that are in the, in the group.
Just one other thing I suggested, I don't know if this is legal or kosher or what, but maybe, is there an incentive, like, again, private sector, for teachers to go and they'll be.
There is chaperone pay and, and the Board of Education and their contract, but it's also three days of their lives. So you know what I mean? It's, it's not like they're getting $20,000 for three days. They're getting a nice amount of money, don't get me wrong. And they do appreciate that 100%, but it's also three days of their lives. That's the, that's the piece. And, and I just also want to say, I understand the kids are disappointed. The last thing I want to do is make kids unhappy. That's not my goal ever in life.
By the way, we did borrow a chapter out of the private sector book and we did increase significantly the chaperone pay.
In the last contract.
Even within the con, pardon me.
They did.
Even within that context, we, right, we've come up to it. So thank you very much for bringing that up. Yes, that was, yes, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My work here is done.
Does anybody else have a question? DC, come on up.
Be careful, be careful. You can, you can sit if you want to.
Hi, Matthew Wallen, 15 Bearfield Road. That was pretty embarrassing.
No, it's okay.
My question to you is this, class size. Now, the class you just had go through was larger than most?
Our average cla, the class that just went through, 307 students are in it. Typically, our class size is between 200, grade size, I should say, not class, grade. Overall grade level is between 270 to 300.
270 to 300.
Is more or less.
Did you have more kids this year?
We had more kids this year than when, 20 more kids went this year than last year. And it's statistically the same proportion, more or less, of the overall grade level. So last year, it was four busloads, this year, it was four busloads. The difference between the four busloads this year is there was not a seat on the bus. Extra seat, meaning for the kid who got sick.
Okay, so the class size you have coming through this year, the seventh grade?
The one, the current seventh grade is at about 282, 284.
282, 284, and do you expect the same?
It's going to, it, it has been over the course of the last five years, it is the same proportion it amounts. So I don't, this year, it was 183 students. Next year, I'm sure it's going to be somewhere around 186. I've always said that 150 was our.
286, right?
28, no, I'm, in the Junior Honor Society.
Oh, in the Junior Honor Society, I'm sorry you meant the grades.
I've always, I've always maintained over all of the years that 150 is really our tipping point. 160 puts us over the edge. This year, yes, it was. But, but I will also just say this, the same issues that happened with this number of kids, this, it's not just this year. It's not just this year. This has been, when, when, ongoing for four or five years of the different issues that are coming up. are coming up. As the subs weren't as bad back in the day, we could get subs, and we had people in the building. People weren't married with children back in the day, now they have kids and they can't be on the chaperone. Kids didn't have cellphones back in the day that were Snapchatting back and forth to the kids that didn't go. Kids didn't have, parents didn't have LifeLock 360 or whatever it's called to call and tell me the bus was speeding. I mean, there are all sorts of different things that also entertain, and when, so that adds to everything. It, it, it is really, the middle school shuts down for three days, and if you, and if I was told, "Shut down the middle school for three days," that's a different story, but it's, it's the 180 at the expense of the other 700.
Back to family discussion, that, you know, which days?
Right, which days? Are the ones for DC.
Those are the three days.
Have we looked at, this trip has been in place for five years, correct?
No, this trip has been in place for 20 years at least.
20 years, and so there's really no telling what type of statistical drop you may have in the demotivation of children from not having this type of trip.
I would hope that the motivation is to be doing their best, being in the National Junior Honor Society. I would hope that, because there are kids, but we have kids that are working really, really, really hard, and their absolute best is an 85. And that's great, that's their best, and we take away three days of instruction for them because they can't go to DC. Like, that's how I do view it in certain ways, and that's a big problem, too. So, I think that if, if everybody knows that they do their best, and they're the best, you know, eighth grader that they can be, and we take them all on the one-day trip somewhere, fun and community building, that's where we're gonna have to end, that's where I would like us to end up going.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Can I just say that this man's children graduated a long time ago? And that, I'm, I'm just gonna say that I had your daughter in camp. Say, "I'm right."
I was gonna say that, Sheila.
He took away his line.
I know, I've known him that long.
I know. It's my pleasure to know you that long. Thank you for your work at Rockville Center.
Me too, Jeff.
Jeff Greenfield, citizen taxpayer. What I may say may not be popular with some parents, but it's okay. I've said some unpopular things from here before. All good things may have to come to an end, and this may be something, because of the environment we're in today, as an insurance professional, I'm nervous about it. I'll tell you why I'm nervous about it also. I lobby regularly in Washington DC. I see these kids. I see, over the years, the change in the kids with all their paraphernalia, and it takes, they hold up the whole line getting into Congress through security because they got so much on them, more than I even bear. These kids are carrying more, boom boxes and everything like that, and I don't know why you need a boom box to go visit Congress. I'd like you to change the focus of this trip. Don't deny them the trip, make it a family trip. Use the expertise, my, when I, we had, not that I'm sure I would have made it, I don't remember a trip for Honor Society when I went to school here, at, at the junior high school, not at the middle school. My parents took the responsibility of taking me to Washington DC and showing me all the sights. I had one kid that didn't want to go on the trip, for whatever reason. She liked to go to camp, but she didn't want to go on this trip. And instead, or maybe she was hurt that year, we went, made it a family trip. We took the family. We went to Washington DC as the family unit. We're used to in Rockville Center, we're travel teams going on trips together. So, let's help with your expertise of running these trips to make it family-oriented, so we don't have to worry about chaperones, we don't have to worry about loss of schools. So, maybe one vacation, they won't go to the Caribbean, maybe one vacation, they won't go skiing, or just go on an educational trip as a family unit. I think it would be good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else like to come up to the podium?
If you didn't like it, just leave it alone.
Scare her away, Jeff.
Give that effect on people.
It's a good night.
Thank you so much, Mrs. McGinn. We appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila.
We're going to move on to policies. We have a couple of policies out right now, actually, three. We have one and a form in stage one that Chris Powers, who I would like to welcome to our meeting again, district's attorney, had done some work with us. The last time the way we left it was, we were reviewing policy 6480, and that's tutoring professional services for fee remuneration or consideration. And we, we kind of started by acknowledging that the policy we had was, needed to be separated by tutoring, coaching, and also music instruction because they didn't all function the same way. So, what we had mentioned in the last meeting was that, out of information that was given to us from the public, we started to really take a hard look at one of these policies that had been put out, and trying to make a clear distinction, determination, that any person who's working in the district that's tutoring a child, that child could not be in their class as an example for a teacher. When it came to coaching, if there were, we hired a coach for a team in Rockville Center, that they would not be outside, offer, being offered money or being paid money outside of that team to privately train those same children. When it came to music instruction, it was the same thing, maybe giving voice lessons and then having to do with the auditions. So, this is where we're at with the policy. We did separate it into those areas. It still needs some, some work on our part to make sure that all of this language is very clear. So, I'm going to open it up to the board, we could talk about 6480, the actual policy, not the form right now. Anybody? Want to start?
All right, let's, I'll start with tutoring.
Yep.
So, the way this reads, you can't tutor a student who is currently in your, your class. What if the student was in your class last year? What if it's this summer? Are we allowing that?
Right. I think that we need to make that more clear.
Sorry, so subdivision one under tutoring is currently in the employee's class, so if a student graduated in June, under this policy, the teacher would be permitted to actually provide instruction during the summer to that student. So, if the board was of the opinion that you wanted that expanded, I could certainly do that for you and eliminate the word "currently." What we're trying to achieve here is that during the school year, if a English teacher is teaching a particular student, the student needs help, that teacher should not receive additional pay because the kid's not getting it. So, what we're trying to do is to open up the option for other teachers to get involved and to provide supplemental instruction to that child that is struggling for whatever reason. So, what we try and do is we're trying to identify a clear policy. Policies come down to, they must be crystal clear, because if it's not crystal clear, you don't know how to follow the particular rules that are applicable here. So, your prior policy had the word "currently" in it, we can certainly make it broader so that our employees are not allowed to teach kids, whether it was this current year or prior years as well. It could be somewhat onerous, and you have to consider that as well.
Would it just be prior, or would it be subsequent, like beforehand as well?
It could be anticipated.
Yeah. So, that's where that, right? So, that's where it becomes, because if you're looking at the tutoring, then the same line one for coaching.
That's why-
Right. And then you ask about our policy here, when parents call their guidance counselor and say, "Can I have, I, do you know anyone that can tutor my child in Spanish?" And the guidance counselor gives them recommendations from people in the school, but not their current teacher.
Sure, under that, on this particular policy, if that were the case, that where mom was looking for a Spanish teacher, and Miss Smith is the, the teacher, you couldn't go to Miss Smith, you could go to Miss Jones.
Right.
But this policy builds in a practice where that would have to be approved by the superintendent of schools. That's subdivision two of this policy. So, we're trying to streamline it, so that if you're going to another teacher, we want to make sure everyone's on the same page with this. You know, this is quite an obligation for everyone to get it right, because you're trying to keep an eye on who's actually receiving money from parents.
So, the approval process, it's, it's, it's more, it's a notification and approval, but it's just approved?
No, your prior policy was basically, "I am going to tutor a kid."
Right.
This doesn't say that any longer. This says, "I would like to tutor a kid, and I'm seeking your permission to do so."
Does the superintendent, is there latitude, the superintendent can say yes or no?
It's his call.
It's just, there's no, what, you said yes to Ms. Barry, you now have to say yes to Ms.?
You have to be consistent in your decisions.
Right.
That's why you want to make it a central entity, such as a superintendent. Your prior policy made it principals decide this matter, and it seems to me, if you have a number of principals, they may have different standards that are applicable. So, by having to go through the superintendent's office, that centralizes the decision-making process.
Is that how other schools do it, Chris?
No.
No?
They do not.
Okay.
How do they do it?
How do they do it?
It's usually the principals. What we're trying to do is to make this-
Just, you're trying to make it more concise, that's why I added that in. Yeah. Makes sense. So, just to follow up on that, if I'm an eighth-grade teacher and I'm tutoring a seventh-grader, I don't know if that student's going to be in my class next year.
Right.
The way this is written, I would have to submit the form in the case that that student becomes my te, my, sorry, that student becomes my student the following year. Is that right?
Right now, it says "currently."
Right.
What I'm hearing from the board is you may want to expand that. Currently is currently, which is, if the kid is in your class, you cannot tutor that child. That's very simple. That's basically what a lot of districts have, you can't tutor your current children. What the, the board is now suggesting tonight is, what about, you know, subsequent years? You know, that becomes sort of tricky, and it's even trickier with coaches, because I get this a lot of thought. So, for the coaches, for example, if you're a dad and you're coaching Little League, and you have kids who are seven or eight years old, and then five years later, you're their coach, are you supposed to actually run through this process as well? So, you know, there's just so much control you can put over this. I think what we're trying to do is say, you know, if a kid needs tutoring, there's a process to achieve that. The key here is, how stringent are you going to make this, this process? This is fairly stringent, what I've put together for you, and we can always roll it back if we need to.
Going back to the example about coaching five years prior to having the child, it, isn't what was kind of missing in the last one, that reporting, right? So, making it stringent in the sense of reporting is that, that's brought to the attention of the district, and where that wasn't as strongly worded in the last policy, and that's maybe where we had some issues. So, even if it were a five-year thing, again, if it was reported, and then the superintendent decided, "Okay, that's five years ago, I'm looking into this," and then was, it was still, it was still brought to the attention of the district. Is that the goal of, in a scenario like that, isn't that the goal?
Sure, you want to have knowledge-
Right.
-of what the prior contact had been.
Right.
That's what you're trying to achieve.
Right. And it's saying, without that prior approval, they may be disqualified from, in the coaching example, for-
Correct.
In, on page two, number six, sorry, number five, the designate would disqualify an employee from being assigned a coaching position at the district without that prior approval.
Correct.
So, there's a consequence in there if it were not reported.
Sure, so, you know, just fiddling around with number five, right now, under coaching, page two, the private coaching and/or training of a Rockville Center student without receiving prior approval, the superintendent or his designated will disqualify the employee from being assigned to coaching. So, just thinking about that, you know, I draw back to Little League coach. It's, you know, a mom or dad coaching a Little League team, they didn't receive compensation for that. Perhaps what we need to do with sub-five is, the prior coaching and/or training for compensation must be brought to the attention of the superintendent of schools. So, there are a lot of different scenarios out here that you're trying to address with this policy. That's why I thought it would be important to break it down by tutoring, coaching, and music instruction as well.
Yeah, I agree. It's definitely helpful. It made a big difference. It definitely made a big difference. It's much easier.
So, with the board's permission for number five under coaching, I think we should add the word "for compensation."
For compensation.
Is it really necessary for the superintendent of schools to know that a mom or dad was a Little League coach five years ago, and now that kid is potentially on that, that coach's team? I don't think that's what you're trying to achieve here. I think what you're trying to achieve is, you have kids that are receiving training, they're paying a coach, you know, $50 a session, now that person's actually in a position to decide whether the kid makes the team or whether the kid's going to get playing time. I think that's what you're trying to address, not the Little League moms and dads.
I think we're also trying to address, it's not just private coaching. If a coach is compensated for coaching a student in, in any way, we need to consider, doesn't have to be private on his level or her level, it could, they could work for somebody who coaches them. It could be something like that.
I think we actually addressed that, sir, in number four for coaches. The Rockville Center School District Coach who is associated with an outside sporting program in which district students participate shall provide notice. So, we kind of contemplated that as well.
Right, that's where that form comes in again.
A lot of moving parts here, and you're just trying to get it right.
So, then at that point, are we saying that they can coach someone, they just have to let the athletic director know? Is that what you're saying in that?
They would have to then fill out the form.
And then who makes-
The form that goes to the superintendent.
To the superintendent. So, if we, so then the policy's still leaving that open that that could happen?
Correct.
Okay, because that was one of the questions that we were discussing-
Right.
About not having that, the ability of that.
It's very much like the old form.
Correct, right.
It still leaves a very gray area-
Correct.
-for the, you know, for the, for someone's judgment.
Correct.
What we're trying to do is, if you, in your capacity, receive compensation from a kid, or more importantly, more likely, their mom or dad, we need to know about that. That's what it comes down to, so that a decision can be made as to whether or not you're in a position to be fair and equitable to the students that are coming before you, potentially making the team.
I, I think we run into problems with the old policy, and I think this problem, this, this policy will have more opportunity to run into problems, because I, I really don't read it that much different than the old policy, and the old policy led us into some
When we created the form, last meeting, we said it was supposed to be like a catch-all, right? I know we're not looking at the form right now, but what in this policy reads as if the form is just for a catch-all?
Well, we tried to capture in the form, in general terms, what the policy is laying out, and that's what we're trying to do in a stream. You don't want for every kid who is possibly receiving these services and every coach to have to sign off on a four-page document. So, you try to streamline it into, "How do you know this kid? Are you receiving compensation?" That's why we came up with these forms. And these forms also are similar to your prior forms, but they've broken down to three separate forms as well. So, you know, I looked at other school districts, and what they have done with tutoring, and none of them go into the level of detail that your prior policy even had.
Right.
So, you had your prior policy, which was in existence until a month or two ago, we've even expanded upon that. So, these conditions that you are considering are fairly stringent at this point. What we're trying to do is to make sure that everyone knows what their responsibilities are. I think I get it from having been here last month, which is, if you're getting paid, we need to know about it so we can make an informed decision. That's kind of what you're trying to do.
Can we make that language more clear to say that you cannot be, that, that, I think what, what we're afraid of is that the form is allowing, in some case, it to happen as long as you fill out the form.
Right.
And I think we're trying to, we were under the impression the form would be, for those other weird circumstances, like, I used to teach in Garden City to Kelly Barry, and now she moved to Rockville Center, and so did I, and I should report that I took money at that time from her. And I just want to report that there's a, there's a history of payment for services between me and this family. I think I thought the form was going to be that for reporting, for good information for us, so that we can say, "We know that this has happened, and it's not current, but we know it." What I'm worried about is, we're trying to make our policy very tight to say, "If you are," and I'll use coaching, "if you are coaching a Rockville Center team, you are also not taking money on the side to privately train those children." I don't care if you fill out the form.
Right.
I think that that's, that needs to
That's the question, right, that's the question.
That we don't want the form to be the way to get around it.
Sure.
Right now, it just moves it to the superintendent, that decision, whether or not it can do it.
Right, right.
The other form does also.
But it should, in those cases like Tara just pointed out, right? We need something in case something, because we, like we said last time, we can't possibly dictate every possible future.
Right, because we need good information.
Here's the key distinction with the newest forms as opposed to the old form, and it's three lines down. It now reads, "I request permission to tutor, to coach, to provide music lessons." Your prior forms didn't say that. Your prior form said, "I'm going to be tutoring." And that was a major problem. So by changing to, "I request permission," the condition proceeding to actually doing that is superintendent saying, "You can do this." And that is a major shift.
Okay. I know we're jumping to the form, so let's go back to the policy. Any other issues? Again, I think we all agree, we want to tighten up however we can, and I do, and I really do appreciate all the work they did, and I really think that we're headed in the
Much better.
Headed in the right direction.
It's much clearer.
We just want to make it as clear as possible, that's the goal.
And on page three, where it says superintendent of schools, the last sentence, or his or her designation, "Staff members in violation of this policy may be subject to discipline." So Dr. Johnson, how does discipline work if a staff member breaks a policy? Is there a continuum? What does that look like?
We have to do it on a case-by-case basis. I mean, if they, they do it willfully, or if they do it, I mean, what we do is, we conduct an investigation, and on the basis of that, we decide if there is going to be a penalty assigned to the teacher, or to the staff member.
And who does that? The superintendent, administration does that?
It's usually assigned to somebody, either that, it can be done by an outside person, such as one of our attorneys, or it can be done, and we routinely do it. One of the assistant superintendents would be involved in that, any one of the three, depending on what the problem is, and who it might be, or what type of staff member it may be. We would do an investigation, and then we would have to act upon the particular circumstances that surrounded the action.
And then superintendent and administration from that gives the discipline action?
Yes, if it's warranted.
I'm a little confused, because if you violate a school district policy, why, shouldn't there be a certain penalty? Should it not be a variable? If you violate what is the rule of your employment, why would there be a variable in the punishment?
You mean the words "may be disciplined"?
Yeah, and even, you know, if you violate the policy, or any policy of the school district, shouldn't there be a certain punishment, whatever, whatever it may be? I don't understand how it
Well, then you should write that into the policy.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
That's what I'm saying, it should be, you know, this is going to happen if you violate a school district policy. I don't think it should be
May.
Up in the air.
So what you can do is, instead of saying, "Staff members in violation of this policy may be subject to discipline," you can say, "will be subject to discipline." The discipline comes in a lot of different forms, so
Right.
if it's coaching, for example, coaching appointments are on annual basis. You can be the greatest coach in the world, but you're not guaranteed to come back the second year. Or during the course of the season, there are other sanctions that can be imposed, like you're not going to be participating in sports. If it's really bad, and you catch someone doing something like stealing from you, as there's been a complete manipulation, not only would they be in trouble for, you know, potential coaching responsibilities, but there's something else out there called 3028, which is, they could actually lose their job if it's that bad. So when you ask for us to lock in, sir, to exact sanction, that's going to be driven by the severity of the bad act. There is a bit of a continuum there, there certainly is.
But there's an acknowledgement, if you break policy, there's discipline.
Right.
Whereas may.
There's still
In the simplest form, if you break policy, you would be disciplined.
Sure, "will be subject to discipline" still allows for discretion.
Correct.
Right.
It does. Well, that's any, well, that's any policy or anything that happens in a school district.
Right, right.
Chris, I just need to reiterate what you just said.
Sure.
There are very, very specific guidelines that are established by the state of New York under 3028, on how we are to proceed with regard to any kind of discipline, even if it involves a violation of policy, and anything more than a counseling letter. Once we get beyond that, we're into 3028, and the, all of the laws and guidelines associated with those laws kick in with regard to how somebody can be disciplined. Now, it's not, that's for teachers, and for everybody else, it's Part 75 of the, of the laws, of the civil service laws. So this is all prescribed, John, in, in New York State law. Chris, you may want to comment on that?
Sure, so if you are a tenured teacher or administrator, and you commit a bad act, whether it's a policy like this, or something really severe, you have some protection called Section 3028 of the education law, which is a full-blown hearing. Hearing officer is actually appointed, is an employee of the district. The Board of Education has a limited role during most of the proceedings.
Chris, could I ask you to just get that mic in front of you? We have some parents that can't hear. Thank you, some guests.
Sure. So 3028 lays out, if you're going to sanction someone, Dr. Johnson is correct, if you're going to put a letter of reprimand in their file, believe it or not, a letter of reprimand requires for tenured teachers and administrators that you go through the 3028 process. A fine, a suspension, certainly a termination, they're all subject to the 3028 analysis. You can put a critical letter in a person's file, which is, hey, don't do this again. That does not require the 3028 process. So there's something else out there called, and this is a state issue, which is a Part 83 referral? Part 83 is if someone commits an act of moral turpitude, superintendent is required by statute, by regulation, to notify the state education department, which means that they take a look at the act as to whether or not it will constitute an act of moral turpitude, for which the person's certification to teach or to be an administrator could actually be pulled. That's for the worst of the worst. So if you have someone that violates a policy like this on a low level, they're not subject to losing their job over something like this. Could coaching be taken away? It could be. Could they receive a critical memo? They could. But when you start to climb the ladder and to get into 3028, first of all, it's very expensive to do it, and you do them all the time, but it's very expensive to do. And if the sanction that you're seeking is, we want to put you on notice not to do this again, you can get that with a critical memo, without going to the level of a letter of reprimand. So Dr. Johnson's correct, there's a whole process if you're actually going to impose a sanction, such as that which is identified in 3028. 75s that Dr. Johnson's making reference to would be for non-instructionals, would be for custodians, cafeteria workers, groundsman. They don't have those same kinds of protections that teachers and administrators have that have tenure. So it's a whole process. So if you were to lock into, you're going to receive the following. There's something else that's out there, it's called the education law. So I would not advise that you lock into exactly what the discipline's going to be, sir.
Education language usually says, "may be subject to discipline." Just I know in my own work, that most of the policies that I follow, it says, "may be subject to discipline."
May?
Maybe. That's what, every policy that I know that I've worked on, that's what it does say.
I'm comfortable with that, if that's what you're
No, we can, we can say "will," but I'm just saying, that's not an uncommon language, right, Chris?
No, it's not, it's not. "Will" is a little stronger.
Yeah, it's stronger.
Right, so that's what it still gives latitude.
There should be some request, and you should have some punishment too. I think if you get this policy out there, you know, clearly work with the board to nail it, so we're very clear on what they're doing. If you make it very clear that if you violate this policy, it's going to be very clear that it's going to be a big deal. And that, that's very important, that you let the employees know that.
Well, that comes back to the communication too, right, that we were talking about. Just once this is policy, then it becomes incumbent upon all of us to make sure that, administration really, to make sure that staff is aware.
Sure.
Number seven on coaching, district parents or students may not be solicited during school hours, on school grounds, or school, or through district resources for coaching and/or training services. We live in, I think we live in a world where that makes no sense. It should be anytime, not on your email, not on your, your text. It shouldn't be permitted to be, you know, solicited. It's just, I don't know how to enforce that, but that, that's kind of odd for me to read that.
So
So they can solicit after hours, is that's what this is saying?
Right.
It's giving, it's giving a little window.
That's what we said last time.
Yeah, I thought we said that last time, too. May not be solicited through district resources. I think that's where we had left off, right? Like, that was really what we were looking
Yeah, I have that still circled.
Not during school hours or on school
Nowadays, coaches have kids' emails and parents' emails and all that. So are we allowing solicitation at, from six till 11 at night?
No, we shouldn't be giving an open window.
So, you know
Yeah, no, I agree.
That needs to be clear.
I don't want to say that.
But I think you have to watch that, and I'll tell you why. Which is, you are allowed to go out and to have a separate form of income. So let's say I'm an English teacher, and I have three kids at home, and I want to be able to tutor, I want to be able to tutor elsewhere.
Chris, the mic.
Thank you. You want to, that's much better, thank you. So what you may want to do is, here's a consideration for you, which is, you're an English teacher, you have three kids at home, you are someone that is capable of tutoring kids, you start a website, and you say, "I'm a good tutor, and if you'd like to have me tutor your kid, here's my email address." I think what we can do here is, we can say, you're not allowed to directly solicit Rockville Center parents. I think for you to put a blind across the board, you're not allowed to try and get any additional work anywhere, I think that'd be a problem.
No, it definitely is with, for Rockville Center students, my concern.
So what we could do, sir, is say, district parents or students may not be solicited, Rockville Center parents and students may not be solicited by staff members. That, that I think will fly. That I think will fly.
District doesn't mean that, Chris? District parents or students? You're saying, by saying the words "Rockville Center," that change, that alters that?
I think it clarifies it, sir.
So let me just ask you as well, as a former track coach myself, who would speak to students during the day, and see if I'd get them to run on my team. District parents or students may not be solicited during school hours, on school grounds, or through district resources for coaching. It doesn't say anything about outside remuneration or anything like that.
You mean about, like, private coaching for
Yeah, but this doesn't read that way. This reads as though I can't go up to a kid during a school day
And see coaching on the
Instead, I want you to come out for my team. So we just need to add that, I think, for outside compensation or something.
So if you're looking to get kids to join your team,
Right.
you're going to walk in and say, "I need you."
Yeah, yeah, so I'm soliciting them during the day, but I think that just means, I think that needs a
For like the private
Yeah, for private or outside.
Coaching.
Outside compensation.
It's, yeah. You're soliciting.
I mean, if you read it, the strict letter of the law, I just happen to read it that way.
Yeah, sure, no, I agree.
I think if you want to make it clear, that's the better way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Coach.
Okay, so we're at, any other thing from the board?
Can I ask Carol Rosetto a question? What are the, I don't know if you want to go to the mic quickly. What are you finding that your colleagues in other districts are doing around this type of a policy?
Some are not doing anything, some have policies. I do know that some of the districts actually want their varsity staff to build their programs, so they permit the varsity staff to run their youth programs in their districts for pay. So
Do you see it both ways?
It kind of runs the gamut, yeah.
Just always looking to see what's out there and what other
Yeah.
people are doing around us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're at stage one, and we could move it forward with some changes. I think we should start to work towards that, because we, this is looking so different to start than it was when we were at stage one last time, so, do you have a question?
Maybe Mrs. Rosetto could come up and just talk a little bit about the policy as it exists now, and just comment on it, if she sees we're going in the right direction, or want to direct us in any other way.
The recent changes.
Yeah. Carol, any comment on the recent changes?
Well, originally, when I looked it over, number one, I had said, you know, what happens, I trained Joe last year, and now he's trying out for my team this year. I didn't know he was trying out for my team this year. Does this statement really cover that, you know, so specifics? I know sometimes you don't know who's trying out for your team, probably worse for the fall sports than the winter and the spring, because you have an opportunity to know who's coming out. And then I just wrote on number four, I just wrote clarification. So is this, is this for, if you don't coach people, if you, if you don't coach people directly, so do this rule still applies to people that run programs, but not coach the students directly? Because the, one of the sentences says, "in your, on your team now." So those are just two things that I thought of. Right, doesn't catch, yeah.
So I think that question pertains to, if somebody is, owns or runs an outside kind of training service, but isn't directly the person coaching the child, how does that fall into the policy? That's the question you're asking.
Sure, so let me, let me take a crack at number one. Right now, it reads, "No district coach may coach and/or train, such as travel team, sports camp, private training. A student for compensation when said student is currently on his or her school team." I thought about that. And I was thinking that one of the things you could add is, or is eligible to try out for a team. But now you're kind of like projecting out as well. If you're trying to make this as stringent as possible, that's how you could accomplish it, or eligible to try out for the team.
But then you go all the way back to second grade, I could be eligible
Well, that's what we were saying before.
Back to Little League, exactly.
Right, right.
Yeah, but those, second grader's not eligible to try out for my seventh-grade team right now, they're not eligible.
It's not within that window of time.
Right.
There's, that's where the form
But what's the window?
But then, isn't
But then there's a window of
Yeah, how far back, how far back you're going to go.
Many a grader, right? And I could, so I'm going to be eligible next year, maybe. So then how far back do you go?
Right, right.
That's the question.
I think that that's where the form maybe could be utilized, and, right? The determination could be made if there's a conflict.
If it's not
And that's, if there's like a length of time in between
That's where the superintendent
That's where the superintendent could step in, because it's not current. It's, right? It's, there's, there's time.
Right.
So I could certainly add language, the effect of, or the student is eligible to try out for such coach's team, and see if that works. I could try that, no problem.
And four, it was about owning or running an outside program, even if they were not the person directly coaching.
Sure. This is to John's point earlier, which is, number four, Rockville Center coach who is associated with an outside sports program, so we made this quite broad. So it doesn't require direct coaching. You know, so if you're running the program, but you're not down in the trenches on the field with the kids every day, this actually requires that you let the boss, the superintendent, know about that. So again, we can make an informed decision as to whether that's problematic.
Right.
So that's why I went with the word "associated" as opposed to, you know, something more narrow, frankly.
Yeah. Thank you, Carol. Anything else?
On the policy?
On, just on 6480.
Yeah.
Then we'll look at the form. So I think we have a good foundation, and I think we need some changes. Moving it from one to two would not be rushing that process. I think that we are getting there, so I'd like to move it to stage two. That's okay with everybody?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll move that to stage two. All right, so now we're going to look at the form. Can we wait until public mic time, Jeff? Because I got to set a good precedent, thank you. We're going to go to the form 6480F, and then we have one, two, and three. So these kind of coordinate to the new version of the policy. So these are redone to kind of work off of the wording of the policy. So let's take a look at these, and these are, again, separated for tutoring, coaching, and music instruction.
So again, I'd please note that the major change to these forms is the third line down, "I request permission to provide." And we made it quite clear in the policy itself, that that is the condition proceeding to teaching, coaching, or providing music instruction. We want the boss to know about it before you actually start to provide those services.
So can we add something in these forms that's about, what we were talking about earlier, about past experiences? Because this is about type of service to be provided, and scheduled to begin on, but is not so much about leaving an opportunity for somebody to talk about a relationship that may have existed in the past? It's more of a future form?
Right.
Okay, like even if there's maybe one or the other.
Well, then that's really like a notification.
Right, it's a notification form, right. You're either about to do...
I know, I did this already.
Or I did this. I think that that's where we had thought the form would also be, so, yeah. Right now it's written as, "I'm going to do this, I'm asking permission to do this."
Right, and then it'll be more reflective of the policy.
Right.
So the form should match the policy.
Right.
How about something like this, after name of student, prior provision of services provided?
But if we're asking permission before, how do we know when they, if they try out for the team, until they make the team, he won't, they won't, he or she won't be able to ask permission or explain permission. They'll just have to say, okay, now this person who I coached three years ago is on the team, but that's after the event. They don't know that they'll make the team.
But there's that, he added that eligible for tryout piece in the last one, I think...
So we're going to get, we may get a ton of paperwork from a coach because there may be 10 kids trying out for the team who he may have, may have coached. And we won't know until the first day of tryout and then he'll have to submit the forms and the superintendent will have to approve or deny. And while that kid is trying out, it's going to make it, that's going to make it, I don't know how to monitor that.
That's a good point. Like they, you don't know, right, Carol? You don't know who's trying out till they...
Especially at middle school where there are 75 kids trying out for a team. How does a coach deal with something like that?
So if the, if the child or children showed up the day of the tryout, would it be unreasonable to expect then the coach to go back to this and say, "Childs A through F that showed up today are kids I coached five years ago." I mean, would that be unreasonable to expect them to do it as, when they are aware, immediately aware?
Well, it's not unreasonable to ask it. You'd get the information, but then what happens if it's a conflict and now you're starting a season with 75 kids and no coach, really, which was the position we were in this year? So that's the problem. So I don't know if we want to do two separate forms where it could be, I'm requesting permission to provide coaching and training in addition to my role as this outside coach. So that's one thing because I'm already a coach and I, I'm in this position already so I know kind of who I'm coaching. And then the, maybe the other form could be, prior to me being hired as a coach, I coached these Rockville Center kids.
So that's just a notification now that...
Correct.
Not asking, asking permission or asking to be approved for that, just to, just to put it out there?
I mean, yeah. I mean, there are so many different scenarios when it comes to like summer camps. I worked for a summer, summer camp in Oceanside and, you know, there's 40 kids that happened to sign up this summer. You don't know it, you're just a camp worker. And I now have, of the 40 kids, there's one kid from Rockville Center. You know, I mean, that, those are the scenarios. You don't know who's coming into the, some of the outside programs if you're, if you're, you know... Right, yeah. So there's, there's a lot of weird scenarios that you honestly, I don't think you could really account for. And then it's, it's the, it's the timeliness of it. So what am I doing now if, if you, if it is determined? It's a battle to get coaches. So there aren't people knocking down the doors. So if I end up at the start of a season, then I now am disappointing, you know, those 75 other kids that may not be, you know, that won't have a coach. It doesn't take five minutes to hire a coach, you know, so, or qualified coach.
But again, if that, if that had happened further in the past versus, I just did it in July and then the kid showed, right?
Totally different story, yep.
Then if the superintendent had to make a determination based off of that and say, yes, you can still coach because you coached them five years ago and we don't see a conflict of interest directly tied to this tryout.
And it was also unknowingly.
Then I think that that's where the superintendent and this form can come into play. If you have somebody who's doing that the summer before, they're about to try kids out, I think that's much more of a conflict and I think that that's what we're trying to limit. So I think that that's where this form and the superintendent approval can, can work.
Yeah, come into play, absolutely.
Because we can't, I agree, we cannot get ourselves involved in things that are happening with kids in first grade programs. I mean, it's, we just can't do it.
Agree with that.
But if we, if somebody, oh, I know that kid or I worked in that town or whatever happened, that's where this, again, this form was supposed to be used and then Dr. Johnson could say, this is six years ago, you know, there's no direct, you know, relationship here, there's no, I don't determine a conflict of interest. That would be different than kind of things happening in that immediate time, right? I mean, that's the way I see it.
I still think you might need two different versions of this form, though.
Well, that's what we're saying. One's about what's happening and one's about what happened.
Yeah.
Right?
Prior to me being hired.
Well, I think we could do it on the same form but just separate it.
Yeah.
Right, Chris? I think we can accomplish that and just do tutoring, coaching, music, and in the same regard, one, future, about to, would like to, and then one, that's like the past. So, okay. Anything else on the forms? So we'll, we'll match that to the policy, we'll add the wording, we'll move it with this to stage two, and then we'll take another look at it next time. All right. Thank you so much. We are on stage three on 6110 and that's the Code of Ethics for All District Personnel. We had prior conversations about this policy. This is at least the third meeting because we moved it along each time.
So, Madam President, let me just point out to you the two minor changes I made to this policy, which is on page one under gifts subdivision A. There was some discussion back in November about, what about aggregate? So we looked into that. And what we did is we added the word aggregate value for this reason. We want to make it clear that a student can't walk in and hand a teacher because the cap is $75, $74 on Monday, $74 on Tuesday, $74. So what we did is, it's an aggregate, aggregate value for one year. So that's one of the things that we added under the gifts provision. We also added in the last sentence under sub A, notwithstanding the foregoing, if two or more students in a class and/or their parents contribute to a gift for an employee, such gift must not have an aggregate value of $75 per student. What was I trying to accomplish there? 10 kids kicking $10 for a teacher at the end of the year, which is $100, that exceeds 75, that's permissible.
Right, right.
That's what we're trying to accomplish here.
They didn't make 75 per child.
Correct, exactly. So thought that would be important to get that in there as well. Those are the changes.
Thank you.
Chris, could I just ask you a question about that paragraph in there on gifts? A number of times you make reference to employees, they talk about person. We seem to be bouncing back and forth between employee, for example, and some of the other things where it says conflict of interest, we're talking about employees. In this case, I think what we may be referencing here, no employee or member of the board, anybody serving in any, any appointed capacity in the school district. I'm not sure how you want to say that. And then, secondly, in that, in that same sentence, although it's somewhat implied by what is said at the very, in the last sentence where it says that it's per student, I think it may be worthwhile being somewhat more clear in articulating after the word gift in that first line. It should be a gift from a person or a single incorporated entity. So it goes well beyond just teachers, although that was the example that's given at the end of that paragraph.
Sure, so...
This is true of any employee in the school district.
Right, but I think that...
And the gift can come from either a person, and I don't know how to say it exactly, but, but any, any single incorporated entity, whether it be a business, a company, a collection of individuals, a committee, whatever it is, wherever it is incorporated, we cannot accept a gift that is in excess of $75.
Sure, so the way, sir, you address that is you say, no person or entity may directly or indirectly solicit, accept, or receive. Yeah, we'll be able to get that in, okay, no problem, I understand. In terms of who it's applicable, it's applicable to board members, employees, and that's right in the general provisions section of the policy. So it's applicable to everyone sitting at this dais and to all the employees that work here as well.
Okay. I, I understand that, but, but we bounce back and forth as we go from paragraph to paragraph between person and employee. In other words, we use them almost interchangeably. I guess it's, I guess it would be fine. But if that is the case, then we should probably include person in that first opening short paragraph.
Okay. Okay, we'll keep it consistent, no problem.
Yeah, okay.
So those were the only two changes that you had made, really, those two?
Correct.
That we, so, does the board want to move it forward with Chris's changes? Do you want to see it one more time? There's just a couple of wordsmithing I think he's going to need to do on it, but otherwise the nuts and bolts are going to stay the same. We can move it on and approve it at the next meeting?
Yes.
I would agree.
All right, thank you. I can move that one, too. Okay, thank you so much, Chris. Thanks for all your work on that. Okay. We're moving on to old business. I'd like to read a statement. Board of Education received a letter today from an attorney who represents three Rockville Center School District families. The letter raises certain issues concerning the girls varsity soccer tryouts. The board has asked the superintendent to undertake a review of the information provided and will decide what, if any, action must be taken to address the issues raised. The board will continue to review policies related to tutoring, coaching, and training of Rockville Center School District students, and that review had commenced tonight. So just wanted to let everybody know where we are there. You know, as I mentioned the last time, we're really trying to make an effort to take what we learned through everything and move forward. Any information that's brought to us that's new, we would still always be considering and that's what we're doing, as, as I just mentioned. But what became very clear to us in what we've been going through with conversations regarding athletics as a board is that we will be adding a board committee, an athletic advisory, that would be made up of members of the community, our athletic director, administrator, board members. So we will be, we're in the process of kind of designing what that's going to look like and in that process, we will put out more information on our website and push that out that would have, if anybody's interested, on how they could reach out to us to apply. You could do so through sending an email to the Board of Ed or through Jackie Wong or district clerk to start, if you're interested in something like that. But, you know, we do have committees that are really focused on curriculum and focus on drug and alcohol and special education, and we just felt it was time and very important to put together a community advisory for athletics. The Board of Ed meetings have become a place where people want to raise issues and they should be able to do that always. But we want to make sure that when, when people come to Board of Ed meetings, we're not taken by surprise by certain things. And some of these committees are a really great way for us to get ahead of some of the issues that are out there in the community. Sometimes we just don't know. And we need people to come forward. I've said that the last few meetings, it's very important. And, and I think an advisory is a safe, nice place for people to do that. So even if you're not on the advisory but you know somebody else is, I think that you could reach out to that person and say, could you please raise this question? Could you take a look at this? I saw this on our website, I was confused by this. So it's just another avenue, another forum for us to raise issues as a community in an appropriate way. So we, we've talked to Mrs. Rosetto about that and we're going to be starting that soon. So you can look for information about that. One of the other things that the board feels really strongly about is support for all of our student athletes. And if any child in this district is going through anything in regards to athletics or anything, of course, with academics or anything, we really want to know that there is an opportunity for support for, for our students and it's something we feel strongly about. And I would like the people on the advisory committee to specifically think about ways we can help some of our student athletes and what they're going through. It's, it's a whole wide world out there and we are very committed to the kids in the district, so I would like to put that to the advisory committee as well and make sure that we're doing a good job of reaching out to our kids. So one other thing that came up at our last meeting in terms of old business, somebody had asked a question at the mic regarding the Board of Education's role in personnel actions, and I think Chris Powers had just done a really great job of explaining the 30-20s and the 75s, and it's, it's a lot of legal stuff and I know it's confusing, but I think that the person was asking, if, if there's a personnel issue that needs discipline, does the Board of Ed make that decision? And the answer is actually, no, we do not. Superintendent makes the decision regarding personnel. If the personnel would like to appeal that decision to the Board of Education directly, they're able to do that. However, a member of the community is not able to appeal the superintendent's decision for an employee. So I just wanted to clear that up because I think that that was a little confusing to some people. The Board of Ed does not oversee the discipline of the personnel, the superintendent does. So I just wanted to clear that up. Chris had been speaking specifically about some of these cases. So that's where we're at with athletics right now and thank you for, Carol, for coming and chiming in on the board policies. We also had parents who had been asking about differentiated instruction, so I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Johnson. I know you'd been meeting with a group of parents that represent different schools. Can you give us an update or Dr. Pelletieri?
Sure. We've, we've had two meetings with a group of parents now representing each of the elementary buildings. I think we've had two very, very good and productive discussions with them. At the end of it, I think that one of the things that they were able to point out and raise through a variety of different questions with us were some of the fault lines in what we have as a service that we provide through Stella. And Dr. Pelletieri and I have been listening very intently and I think there are a couple of components. One of them really focuses on the structure of the program and making sure that, that we take a look at exactly the way in which we, we provide those services right now and return to our roots of where we started back when we put the Stella program together. Even though it wasn't a Ranzilli program per se, it was built around the Ranzilli model. And so what we need to do is kind of revisit our roots and make sure that what we are providing to our kids right now are in fact pretty much aligned with what our original intent was all about. The second part of it has to do with the connection between what happens in Stella and what occurs in the regular classroom. And a lot of that has to do with the differentiated instruction that we provide within the classroom and also the differentiation that we can provide within the opportunities aligned with the Stella program. And the connection between the two, which usually takes place in the regular classroom. So we're very, very cognizant of that. I know that Dr. Pelletieri has in fact been looking at ways in which we can in fact provide a series of opportunities for our teachers to participate in professional development, just well and left as a matter of fact. She's a master at it within her own classroom. We tap our own resources when we can. She met recently with our elementary principals to articulate and to share with them exactly what happens there. So we can begin again using a model that already exists and exists very effectively within her program and with her class so that they, they are much more cognizant and we can begin to disseminate that information, make sure it gets out into the buildings. It's, this is a work in progress. I think it's going to provide us a wonderful opportunity to revisit a, what I think to be a very fertile ground for providing significant enrichment to every child in every building. And so we've welcomed the opportunity to meet with these people and I think that we're going to act very, well, we are already. I mean, that's already underway, so...
Will we be doing a Stella presentation at a future meeting?
We can do it at, well...
Yeah, I'd actually talked to Jess Whalen about the connection between Stella and the classroom and asked that Hewitt Stella teachers come down and give us a presentation and Jess could talk about how she in turn makes those connections to the classroom. So that's one school with one teacher. I don't want to bring down the entire district and have them do that, but that would be an example of something like that. Differentiation is something that's really important in this district. It's, it's really a cornerstone for us and it's something that we need to revisit almost yearly. And so certainly we're going to be looking to do that, a lot of professional development around that. And we have a principals' meeting on Monday and that's one of the topics for discussion, how we're going to start to roll this out in the spring of this year rather than wait till next year.
I think, I mean, to have a presentation of what happens in Stella is nice, but I think a lot of parents are concerned, what is Stella? What does it do? So I think we need to go further back and have almost a crash course on what we, what is the expectation of Stella? What does it provide for our children? How is that laid out and worked out? So I'd really like to see, that would be my hope, to see that for some, for parents who have asked me, like, what do they do?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. That's something that we can incorporate into that presentation. They actually, right now on all, one of the things that parents brought to our attention was that the, each website had different levels of understanding in terms of Stella. So it was actually the Hewitt teachers that helped us put together and worked with some of the other teachers who are actually here tonight. We have a Stella teacher I see in the audience who put together a really great PowerPoint that does go back to the original acronym for Stella, what it stands for, what its vision is, what its goals are. And it is time that we revisit that and that's something that we can incorporate into that presentation.
Thank you. Okay.
We also had multiple parents asking questions about Wilson. So I know some meetings have happened. Can we get an update on what's been going on at Wilson?
Look, the issue that we raised really had to do with the providing for lunch. And even though I can't give you an answer today, I can just tell you that we were looking at it and will be prepared in January to provide you with some alternatives to the way in which it's currently provided right now.
Okay.
All right?
Okay. And as far as Robert, did you mention that you also had met with Jim Duffy about looking at space and possibilities?
I met with Mr. Duffy and we had gone through with the architects possible plans for expanding Wilson in the past. I revisited those plans with Mr. Murphy and kind of went through, not Mr. Duffy.
Mr. Duffy. Really, Mr. Murphy.
And to, to see what those would look like, obviously, if we did plan to do that, we'd have to go into a lot more depth, get the parents from Wilson involved and Mr. Duffy more involved in that process. But, yeah, we did talk about that and different concepts.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to encourage us to do that, starting right away. Get a group of parents together and try and see what they feel their needs are, the lack of space, and if it's a planning process to go that way or manipulate how the, the building inside itself is laid out, I think that's an important step for the board to take and invite some families in and the PTA to, to start those discussions. Just my, just my thought.
Opportunity for superintendent?
Yes, thank you very much. Just one thing, I, I just want to thank, there are still a number of people from Watson School here tonight. The family at the Watson School, I mean, and they, they started talking about it earlier and identified... and identify themselves as kind of a family. Aren't those kids wonderful? I mean, it was just staggering. We don't realize, yes, thank you very much. I mean, it was just incredible. What's equally is incredible, those kids wrote that song.
It's amazing.
You know, it didn't exist. They produced it and then presented us tonight. It was just absolutely fabulous. The flip side of that, and again, you kept seeing this sign walk its way into that video. And that is the partnership that exists between this school district and the foundation. I can't emphasize strongly enough. I will applaud the work that's done by the Watson staff in taking advantage of the grants that are available and then using it. And that was a very, very good example of one of those added dimensions to the school district that we were able to use as a result of the relationship that we have with the education foundation. So again, not just thanks to the faculty, thanks for all of the work that they've done, but also thank you to the foundation. Number two, concerts. We are in the season of concerts. For those of you who have children in any of the elementary buildings, middle school or the high school, I would really encourage you to visit and attend the concerts. You want to raise your spirits a little bit. That really is one of the best ways to do it. Music is wonderful. Music at this time of the year is so energizing. And I'm sorry, Brian is not here to take a bow, but our music department does a fabulous job of putting it together. And if any of you can get to the high school next week on, I guess it's the 17th and 18th, I would really encourage you to do so. The choruses that we have here and the musical presentations are just fabulous. So, third thing. I really don't know how to say this, but, you know, sitting at some of the more recent meetings has been very painful for you, for me, for the Board. I think what we really need to do is take advantage of the season and understand that we really need to tap into, and I've lived with it for 34 years as superintendent, the amount of goodwill that exists in this community is staggering. I see it in working with teachers. I see it in working with this Board of Education and their predecessors in their positions. I see it in working with parents and teachers. I see it in the classroom with kids every single day. The energy, the love of life, the recognition of all of the wonderful things that go on in this world needs to be celebrated. And I think we all need to just kind of sit back at this time of the year and just take a deep breath. And whenever you have that opportunity, give somebody a hug and recognize the absolutely incredible, wonderful goodwill that exists within this Rockville Center community. I won't say it starts here, but we are part of that goodwill. And I know that when Tara was talking before about the opportunities that people have, it's a very scary thing to stand at that microphone for many people to get up and share with us. We're here to make the district better. It is a wonderful opportunity for people in this community to share with us. This Board of Education listens, we listen. Our intent is the same will as yours. We share that with you. And at the end of the day, we want this system, we want this school district to be better because we share the same love for your children as you do. Last of all, I've been always a great fan of Antoine de Saint Azuparé. Many of you may or may not know, he was an existential philosopher. But one of our students read his book called Petty Prance, and it's sitting up there on the wall back there. It's a great way to celebrate this season. "It is only with the heart that one sees rightly. What is essential is invisible to the eye." A wonderful, wonderful way to introduce and to celebrate with one another this wonderful season. And on that note, I wish everyone, I just, a wonderful holiday. And what we need to do is tap into all of the goodwill that exists within this community. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Hackett, can I just jump, that's hard to follow?
I know. We should just go home.
Shut it down. The Education Foundation Gala is, I just want to throw out there, is March 28th this year. It's going to be at Cherry Valley Club, I think, in Garden City. And just an incredible event and a great fundraiser. And all that money goes to, directly to grants for our students. And we happen to be honoring the gentleman who just said that.
We happen to.
Yeah, we just brought us together like that, so thank you.
Here in the presence of greatness. Opportunities for Board members, Mr. O'Shea?
First of all, I'd like to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, a happy Hanukkah, and a happy, healthy, and prosperous New Year. I'd also like to appeal to the community, which is a great, wonderful, compassionate, loving community who only wants the best for their kids, that we take a breath to everything that's been happening over the past few months and look to maybe, we're going to work on the Athletic Advisory Committee. We're trying to resolve issues between the Board, the district, and the parents. And if everybody could just take a break, especially during this season, it would be a great thing for all of us. And with the hope that we can work together, partner together, and create policies that the public is happy with and, you know, everybody is comfortable with. So that's our goal. We're trying to get to where everybody feels right about things and everything is crystal clear. It may take us a little bit of time. So I'm asking you, as a member of the Board, to take a deep breath, enjoy the holiday, and know that we're really working towards making things the way you all want it. I also, I mean, I don't want, the holiday season is a beautiful time for everybody. But I do want to say that a lot of people struggle at this time. It's a strenuous time for people. It's hard for some people. So, and just in what the children are saying today, just a simple word, be kind to people. You never know what the person next to you is going through. As Dr. Johnson said, give a hug when you see it might be needed. It will make a world of difference to someone who is looking for that hug or needs that hug. So reach out to people. It's a beautiful time of year to do that, and it's a hard time of year for a lot of people. So if we all understand that, if we all could just make a difference for one person, it would be, you know, we would make our community that much stronger, that much better. So that's my appeal to you. Merry Christmas, happy Hanukkah, and happy New Year.
Mrs. Dionne?
So walking in here and seeing this room filled with children who then sing to us, it just really reminds me, all of us, I think, of what we're here for. And then, Dr. Leahy, your huge presentation of all of the things that we do in the school beyond the school day that create this incredible environment for our children that starts sometimes at, what, 7:00 in the morning? And that goes till 6:30 at night, and it happens all summer. And it happens on Saturdays. And I really am incredibly thankful for everything that everyone at this table does and all of you people do out there, too. So thank you very much. And I'm not going to repeat everything everybody else said. I'm just going to say have a happy holiday.
Barry?
All right. I thought I was going to be original. I've been working on this for a while, but kind of stole my thunder a little bit. Watson, thank you for turning out in such great numbers. You really are a family, and we love you. So thank you for coming and staying. That's so nice. And, you know, Watson is a family for sure, and this community is a family as well. And I'm honored to be part of both of those units. And I do think it's so important to continue to reflect, we're never going to be perfect, but we can certainly always try to be better. And I think in this season of reflection, we look back on this year that has been quite tough in many ways. And we've banded together, and we will continue to do so. And I look forward, I'm really excited for the new year because we're going through many transitions. And I think it's going to be great. We just have to continue to work together, listen to one another, respect one another, and, you know, keep the kids in mind. And that's why we're all here. So thank you. I wish everyone a very happy, healthy holiday season. And I'm looking forward to seeing you all in the new year. Thank you.
So we didn't plan this. And I guess we must have all been feeling the same way when we came here tonight. And being here, watching Watson, and being part of that family and being on this Board of Education. And when I think about Rockville Center, we call us a village, and we are a village. And tonight, we heard about Project Great, and we heard about ACE. My children are involved in all of those programs. We work, and we need places to send our children all day. And that's where they go. And we love sending them there. These are, all of you become our family. So I really just want to say thank you to all of you for what you do, for all of our staff. Thank you, Sheila. Thank you, Carol, for being here today. I think this is an important thing for our district, that you come, that we, as a district, are presenting information to the community. It should be the people that are involved in the programs that are here discussing what's happening. That's how we get the information. And I think that's so important. And I urge us to continue that practice. And we've learned a lot this year. And I really think that great things are going to happen as the year continues. So thank you, happy holidays, and looking forward to a great new year.
Thank you.
I mean, I don't know. Being last is not easy. Happy holidays. Thank you for coming, and especially administrators. I know it's getting late. And you really could have left. I mean, I tried to get you out, but you stayed. That was very nice. No, I, yes, we acknowledge it's been a tough time. But I will tell you, going through the process of looking for a superintendent for a district, that we've had the same leader for 33 years. We're unprecedented in what we have here. And what we've built is just so special. And as Board members, we've been kind of reminded of that as we go through this process, honestly, time and time again. And it makes us very grateful for the work that we all do here. Makes us feel very appreciative towards our staff and to the community. So I feel like we are reminded every day of all the good that happens here. And I know it's easy for people to get stuck on things that they're not sure about or they're, they want more information about. And we want this to be the place that you can come and open that door and walk through it comfortably and be heard and ask those questions. There are things that we don't know until you come. I promise you, that is really the truth. We need you to do that. So, but we want to keep it a positive environment as well. Our kids really are watching what we're doing. They're really watching, they're listening, they're looking. And I think if we can set a good example, the way we treat each other and the way we run things here, that our kids will follow. So it's really important to us that we keep the kids in mind. We do love working with the kids. So I'm going to segue into, we're going to open up the mic for opportunities for visitors. There were questions that came about on why certain people were muted on the last video. And I will clearly state, we have asked people not to mention names of anybody that's identifiable. So that includes personnel, children, and other members of the community. If somebody gets up at the microphone and does any of those things, we're not able to air that information because somebody then has cause to come against the district. I'm being very clear about that. You're not being muted if you say something negative to the Board of Education. We get that all the time. Trust me, we can handle it. We will listen to you, and we will tell you what we can fix and what went wrong. And we will own it. But we cannot allow people to mention any identifiable information. So I'm just asking, if you come up to the mic tonight, please keep those rules in mind and understand that we're trying to protect everybody's privacy involved. There's no punishment associated with coming up to the mic. So I invite you to do so. Come up, say your name, state your address, and you would be addressing the Board in full. So come on up if you would like.
Hi.
Melissa Servillo, 175 Linden Street. I just wanted to follow up from a year ago. I was wondering if anyone could share how it was going with the IB co-enrolled regents stuff?
It's a great question. It's a great follow-up. Thanks for asking.
Yeah, so no pressure to have details, but...
We'll probably put together something either in January. We'll know better mid-year when we begin to get real feedback on progress. So far, just from an observational point of view and meetings that I've had with Mr. Murphy and with Dr. Pelletieri and our staff and just reviewing from a procedural and from a process point of view, it appears to be working. Okay?
That's a great suggestion. We should absolutely revisit that. So give good information about that. Thanks for asking.
Thank you.
My name's Sarah Rouse.
Oh, you can move it down if you want to pull it down. There you go.
Sarah Rouse, 91 Hempstead Avenue. I sent a letter to the Board, my husband and I sent a letter to the Board last week on Wednesday. I'm not sure if it got to you in time. But it was about the proposed legislation to mandate HPV vaccines and flu vaccines and to exclude children from school if they haven't had an STD vaccine or a flu vaccine, which is basically, even in a good year, is 50% effective. There's a lot of school districts who have made formal written, they've written to the legislators to oppose these mandates. And I'd like to ask the Board if you would consider doing the same.
I'm going to actually ask Mrs. Dionne to, she sits on the Nassau Suffolk School Boards, and there's been a lot of discussion about this topic. So I'm going to turn it over to her.
So, yes, so I serve on Nassau Suffolk. It's a group of about 30 school districts. We got together about two weeks ago, and this came up. For those who don't know, there is a bill in the State House and both the House and Senate that asks to have HPV, requires an HPV vaccine. That bill is sitting in committee. It has been sitting in committee for 10 years. So it's not a new bill. It's something that somebody found and has started to make some, try to make sure it goes away. Several districts have taken out resolutions as a rule and saying that we do not support this. I can tell you that around the table, there's not a single district that supported it, although only two districts at that table sent out a resolution. Some districts are very heavy into sending out resolutions or letters and saying that we don't, you know, getting involved in politics. As a rule, we, this Board does not do that. What we did find out was that, and I think there was something from New York State Superintendent's, no, Superintendent's. I got something from State Superintendent's that said there seems to be no, there seems to be no mood to take this out of committee, right, I think?
Correct.
That it's dying committee. People I know who have called Todd Kaminsky's office have heard the same thing, that if it ever did come out, it was not going anywhere. That it really, it's something that's been sitting around for 10 years that unfortunately, somebody heard about. And I think they are trying now to get rid of it. But we certainly recommend anybody to call their state senators and state representatives and voice your opinion and make sure it dies quickly.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, just so you know, the, our, the way in which we generally operate is to work with our legislators. I am not aware of any attempt. The article in Newsday was somewhat misleading. It made it look like it was something that was on the verge of happening. Any research that I've done, or I believe that either the Nassau Suffolk School Boards has done, is that this is on a dusty shelf someplace. And why it came up now, I'm not quite sure. We're certainly hopeful that it's not going to come out of committee and that that's where it belongs, and that's where it's going to remain. Our association, as the school boards, is prepared to take whatever action necessary to make sure that it stays there. So we're very much aware of it. We don't usually write letters as a, or we found a far more effective way of working is working directly with our legislators. And we do that every year. We meet with our legislators here in the school district. And that has been a very fertile ground for us to provide them with the information that we believe they need in order to take action or not. And they seek our advice all the time, so.
I appreciate that you all seem to be against this. But one of the things my letter pointed out is that the New York State Department of Health seems to think it has authority already to allow healthcare providers to administer HPV without parental... already to allow healthcare providers to administer HPV without parental knowledge or consent. And in fact, a, a, a school nurse in the Bronx has actually gotten, given it to an 11-year-old. So, you know, that's, you can give us all the assurances you want, but I mean, I have questions about, well, what authorities, you know, who does a school nurse, is she answerable to the Board of Ed, or the, the Board of Health?
One of the things we're going to have to look at is whether or not we have to put together a, and, and this will be a question that will come up. If in fact the Department of Health is doing that, what we would have to then do is consider a policy within the school district to prevent that from happening within the Rockville Center public schools.
Right. I mean, I sent the board the regulation...
Even though they may have the authority to do it, it doesn't mean that we would do it.
Okay.
And our school nurses do not give out vaccinations, period. Like, other schools have, have medical units within their schools. Our school nurses do not do that.
Right. But if there was a change in that, if the Department of Health, they seem to just unilaterally do these things, is that something that parents would then be alerted to?
You mean if the legislation changed?
No, I mean, this, this is a regulation. So, this is a letter sent to healthcare providers, and there's nothing to state that that's not a school nurse.
Our school nurse would never give a vaccination.
No, she cannot.
They don't do it. So, it would never happen here. It would, might happen at your doctor, but that would be the parent's responsibility to say, "No, no, no. We can't regulate that." But our nurse...
We don't have any vaccinations.
Never will. At least not now. Doesn't have the authority or the possibility of giving a vaccination.
But, but just so I'm clear, who is the school nurse answerable to? Department of Education, or the Board of Health?
School nurses are licensed by the Department of Education, not by the Department of Health.
But they're employed by us.
Right.
But they are employed by us, and they are, right. They do not work for the Department of Health.
Right.
Let me say that again. They do not work for the Department of Health.
Right, okay. But your position at the moment is you're not going to make any formal statement about these mandates?
I don't want to speak for the board at this point, but we, I will tell you that historically, we generally don't operate that way as a school district. That does not mean that we don't take very strong positions and work with our legislators.
In fact, that meeting is coming up early winter, isn't it?
March.
March. So, we will directly address that, and that's what we had done last year with, we had a conversation about legalization of marijuana at that table. So, we do raise issues, we just don't formally put out a statement as the board traditionally. But this one seems like we're not, I think we were on level five last year with the marijuana being very close. This, this seems to be, like they said, kind of on a dusty shelf right now, so we're, we're not really seeing, but we would still raise that to our legislators in March when we meet with them.
The only one issue I just want to say about the dusty shelf point, I was actually in a meeting with a senator back in March, who said, "Don't worry about the religious exemption repeal, it's going nowhere." And three months later, it was law. So, I'm just saying, don't trust the politicians.
Things can change. You're right, but that's why we would still make our plea to the legislators directly, and, and treat it so that we take that opportunity to tell them how we feel about it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
But stay in touch.
Pauline Gibney, North Long Beach Road, covert parent. I know, as a follow-up to last month's meeting, you gave a general update on some issues, but when you were talking to concerns raised by Wilson parents for space constraints, you didn't mention any follow-up on covert. We had raised the same issue.
We, we don't have any building plans for covert. What, what Mr. Bartels was referencing before were building plans that we actually had put in place. I, I, I quite frankly have not had a discussion with the building principal at this point. We focused on Wilson School. That does not mean we will not follow up with covert in the near, in the near future. Just understand that, that this will become an item for us to consider during the upcoming budget.
Okay.
All right?
All right.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Allison Griffo. I'm 16 North Cross Street. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
I'm just here about the basketball team and middle school.
Okay.
I have a sixth grader, and I know this year is a little bit crazy, so I'm wondering if there is any possibility we could get a second team. So, a seventh grade team and an eighth grade team. So...
Carol, do you want to come up and we could talk about it?
There have been some recent developments, by the way, in what, there's a governing body for athletics in Nassau County called Section 8. Carol has just, I, I think there have just been some very recent developments with regard to that. This is not an issue alone in Rockville Center. It exists countywide.
Right.
So, Carol?
So, starting next fall, they're talking about a pilot program because scheduling issues, that they're going to require schools to do, if they have separate seventh and eighth grade teams, to make two seventh and eighth grade teams, as opposed to a separate seventh and a separate eighth. So, that's just, that's just moving forward, so it wouldn't be seventh, eighth. In terms of having, of adding a basketball team, I personally feel we would need to also add and look at volleyball as well, because those numbers are huge as well. So, something...
The cheer too, as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, something that we, we do need to consider as always was space, so practice times and space and, and availability. If we were to keep the practice times the same, like the three to five o'clock time slot, then we would try to have to find another, like, like we do with soccer and lacrosse, where we bus, bus the kids to Uitt, we would have to possibly find one of the elementary schools, which I know would impact Project Great. We could also do a shift schedule like we do at the high school, three to five, five to seven. That would impact the community programs that use the middle school gyms. Our varsity, another little thing that adds, our varsity gymnastics team also uses the middle school as their home site for practices and games. So, we're very tight with space. Not to say we can't do it, but those are some of the elements. Because there would be four teams now per season, we would have to have games on Saturdays. So, there would be some contractual things, I believe, as well, we would have to take care of.
What about the cost of a team? To add another team, what does that cost the district?
Roughly speaking, first year, each team would be about $20,000, fluctuates a little bit, and then, and that would include uniforms and all the stuff that you would buy once. And then it, then it ranges anywhere from like $15,000 to $18,000 a year, between busing and...
Yeah, I was going to say, that depends on transportation, and whether or not we need a second type.
Trans, yeah, trans, exactly. Transportation, officials, Nassau Bosse's official fees, coaches, coaching, thank you, coaching salaries, yeah.
Carol, even if we had a seventh and an eighth grade, say, in volleyball, is there competition in the county for that, you know, those specific?
You mean if we had two teams?
Right.
Yes, if we had a separate seventh.
Yeah. Because what, 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 yes, what the, what the, they have separate seventh and eighth, they're just like us right now. But we'll all be going to the same thing. Oceanside's just like us, they, we're in our same conference, so they have a separate seventh and a separate eighth, so is Long Beach, and a few other schools.
We only have one team at Carmarthen.
For basketball.
Oh, you have seventh and eighth for bas, oh, sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Yeah. Sorry about that, yeah. So, yeah, so what we're trying to do is, if every school is, has seventh and eighth grade teams, then we have a larger pool to pick from. So, we wouldn't necessarily have to stay within our little conference right now. Right now, we're kind of grouped geographically, but if there are more, if there, everybody's all seventh and eighth grade teams, I would be able to get two separate seventh and eighth grade teams competition.
So, it sounds like it's, it's a possibility. That's good.
Everything's a possibility.
So, I can never have to come up here and...
You'd really hate that, wouldn't you? That's where we're at.
That's everybody's fault.
You can't have that many kids try out, and you just turn them away, and then, especially if you have an eighth grader who shows up, who is dying to make that team, and they can't, and they tried out the year before, and then you have an eighth grader, and they don't make it. Like, the standard is now there's nine seventh graders that make it, and nine eighth graders, and, and you have eighth graders who, and they don't ever get to play basketball in middle school, and that does not make sense to me. But, you know, that doesn't make sense to me at all. I, I mean, I just think there's a lot of programs in this entire district that the numbers are there. I mean, I'm going to use, cheer is another one. Cheer would have a huge amount of tryouts, and there was huge amount of cuts. You have nothing like that in the middle school. Yes, you can do varsity gymnastics if, if it's seventh and eighth grade, you can do that. But there's cons to that, you know, or there's definitely pros to that too, but there's cons to it. And, but, there's no cheer, there's no dance. There's dance teams, there's kickboxing teams, we don't have that. Do you know the amount of money that parents spend on dance teams? On dance?
Have a clue.
Right. So, they would probably love like a dance team too, something like that. I mean, things are changing, as we see, like, don't we sort of have to change with them? You know, add certain things, and, and we just, the kids just want to be involved. Half the time, the kids just want to put a shirt on and walk around the school saying, "I'm on, it's outside the middle school basketball team."
Gotcha, yep.
Or, or anything. Or maybe wear a tie. But, anything, they just want to be part of it. And we're not giving them any shot, if you're just going to take 18 kids, when 80 kids are trying out.
Right.
There's no shot. I don't understand, it's not fully counted.
Right.
I just didn't say that. It's been 18 years. It's, you know, it's a...
It's my third one, isn't it?
Yes, it's a problem. It's, if there's a million kids that try out for the teams, and if there was a way that we could have two teams, that would make it better, so only half as many kids would be sent.
That's one of the problems.
No, it's not. And if they have two teams next year, they work hard, maybe they can get them for next year.
Right.
Right now, it's not the case. I, I'm with you. Right now, if they would take the teams from last year.
I think you made a really good case to get on the Athletic Advisory Committee. Thanks, Al.
Be careful what you do. Be careful showing up.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Will Rich, 165 Morris. So, I have three kids in Watson, there's a lot of Watson families here, and I got a fourth going in. So, there's a lot of people who would like some clarity on the principal situation, and what's the future look like? Is there a search for a new one? I just, I think we're a little bit in the dark, and everybody would like to have a little more clarity.
I might turn that over to Chris, so that he can answer you.
So, I understand, sir, there's some major decisions being made, sir, and there are certain things we could speak about in public, this is not one of them. When this board, upon the recommendation of the administration, is prepared to make a statement to give you the idea, and the rest of the parents definitively what's going on, they'll certainly do so.
But is that, is that just, I understand the past, I'm talking about the future.
Sure, sure. When they're in a position to be able to announce that, they'll certainly do so. I think it's a little premature to do that, especially at a public meeting at this point. A lot of decisions are still being made.
What is the timeframe?
I'll have to talk to the superintendent about that, don't have a specific timeframe, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Sorry. No, Jeff, right over here, come on.
In the spirit of the season, I don't want to put my back to the room.
No, come on, we can't, the video won't get you over there. Come on, we need to, you know, you got to get on the video.
You can send some from here.
Front and center, let's go.
Jeff Greifield, citizen taxpayer, Yuma Court. I'm the father of the two-year calendar from many years ago, and served on the calendar committee. So, let me understand, January, you're going to adopt two years, or only one year?
One year.
Without adopting two years?
No, we just have a conversation, usually about two years out.
You made me a little queasy when you mentioned the Labor Day issue was because of the Jewish holiday, and we shouldn't demonize the Jewish holiday. We have a problem with our holidays. They come early or late, they never come on time. We don't have a set date. I'm sorry. I apologize for that.
I wasn't demonizing the holidays. I was making a point that we should be prepared to go to school before Labor Day next year.
Okay. I'm asking a payroll, not a personnel question. Do we still have two principals at one elementary school on the payroll? Yes or no?
That can be answered.
Yeah, so, what it is, is that the, the principal that's on administrative leave is still a principal of the school district, so she is on the payroll. And the principal that's acting principal is receiving a stipend for working at Watson. So, it's, we're not paying two principals, we're paying principal that's, that's on administrative leave, we're paying a stipend to the principal that's acting there, and then we're paying a per diem assistant principal at the middle school to replace Mrs. Pascarella in the meanwhile.
Do we have any timetable when the double payroll will...
I think that leads to the question of timeline in general.
Sure, and that's something that we have to speak to the superintendent about, get a clear guideline for you, and when we're prepared to, or allowed to, speak to you about that in public, we'll certainly do so, sir.
It will be reported at a public meeting?
Yes, sir.
Not a Wednesday work session, a regular public meeting?
Regular meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I know we haven't had one.
Oh, not Wednesday, whatever, the, the work session, I didn't mean Wednesday. ACE. Dr. Johnson's the father of ACE. And the people left, my kids were in the first ACE group. I wanted to feel old again, like Sheila wanted me to feel old before.
Just saying.
Okay. How many years ago was that, Dr. J?
Probably, I would say, you know, it, it kind of blends into the past, but probably about 15 years ago.
Okay. You're being very kind. I think it was a little longer, but it was a great program that's being embraced, and I was happy to see the numbers, that it's still going strong here, and it's not always athletics, and that there's other things for kids that are non-athletic, and that's one of the programs that Dr. J created that catered to that potential market of students.
Are you, are you speaking against athletes, saying they're going to have an ace?
No, 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 no. I'm just saying that it's, it was good at the time.
Okay.
Okay.
And still is.
Yeah, it still is. Again, no name, but am I allowed to congratulate our athletic director on being recognized by the peers of her...
Just can't mention her by name.
Okay. I just want to make sure it's not going to be bleeped. I, I didn't know we had Rosemary Woods on the payroll here, and it's a new phenomenon, bleeping this stuff. Other, I go to a lot of entities, board meetings, and I've never, you know, experienced that before. But, if your attorney says it's okay, happy to like him. He makes a lot of sense. Again, no name, I didn't use his name, because I don't want to bleep. I hope he comes back regularly, we invested in a sign, I hope to see him coming here.
That's my sign, Jim.
No, we made an investment there.
Yes.
Now, I have something that I asked earlier for a point of information. At my stage of life, I'm very sensitive to the subject. Will you stop referring to things as stage one, stage two, stage three? I have many friends of mine going through that with respect to cancer. Can we, without a policy change, can we change it to step one, step two, step three, maybe?
I don't know, that's a question for the district clerk.
Okay. Well, you don't have to answer me that. You can take it under advisement, but check with your attorney.
Put Jackie on the spot.
I don't, I, she always takes my phone calls, I don't want to put her on the spot. And, last but not least, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, happy Hanukkah, happy Kwanzaa to everybody here.
Thank you.
And I'll see you again next year.
See you next, see you next time. Happy holidays.
Good evening, Salator Romanello, 128 DeMott. I know you have rules, but you also require us to state personal information, I assume that's okay?
That's okay.
Because I have to state my name and my address, but accordingly.
You're talking about yourself.
Right, so I think that's okay, right? So, one, I do appreciate the work that was put in on the conflict of interest forms. It's come a long way from where it's been and the questions that you were directing are the issues that really, there's one major issue going forward that you have to figure out. And that is where there's an affiliation. Someone sets up a corporation or someone is affiliated. They still have, could have say over things. And that's what you have to watch out about. And I'm glad Mr. McCushay, amongst others, was focused on that. So it's a step in the right direction. And we do appreciate, I certainly appreciate that. The advisory council, I think that is a good thing. I think many times the athletic director is left alone without support. And it would be good to have four or five parents who could get the word out, could work with the athletic director, et cetera. So I think that's a good step. I would say you should look at what Menhasset did. They're about a year ahead of us.
Yep.
They had almost the same exact issue we had. And they took action and steps and they put together a plan. And they're, you know, if we can copy from them, we'll save a lot of time, I think. There are two things that I did wanna mention and I thought could have been handled a little better. And I know there are legal implications. And Mr. Powers, if you ask around, he's one of the best education attorneys out there. And I know he advised this board publicly, so everyone heard it. He advised not to disclose what the vote was on a particular subject. I don't have to get into that. But perhaps legally, that's correct. I'm not, you know, saying it's not or it is or whatever. But I think it's really in the best interest of the community to have disclosure on those types of things. The board makes a vote. They should let the parents know. Was it a 3-2 vote? Who voted in the paper? Who voted against? We elected you. We should know on those issues. And I'm not asking you to disclose that now. You know, this is a community of goodwill. And, but when things like that happen, it undermines that goodwill. There's a lot of tension in this room. There's a lot of tension in the community. We know why it's there. We know certain policies probably could have been handled better, enforced better. They weren't. The process wasn't great. But we're entitled to know how you voted. It's really important. And I'm not saying legally. I'm saying as a matter of community and goodwill, you should let us know about those types of things. The last part, I understand the whole personnel issue and why we can't say things like that. And I've been very careful, okay? I've been very careful not to do that. But when that video pops up, someone sent me that video and said, "Oh, my God, look at this." And there's a black screen. And no one's ever seen that before. Okay, and then you look at how many people were censored. And it wasn't just, hey, they mentioned this person and we're going to censor that portion of it. It was everything. And it wasn't done with notice. People didn't know that would necessarily happen. I understand why you wanna have that policy. But there's a less restrictive way to do it. And it's to get rid of that portion of the discussion that did not, that included the personnel issue. That would be much better. And so we, there were issues that were discussed where counsel was explaining things, but because the speaker at that time mentioned personnel issues, we didn't hear from your counsel. And really, as a community, it takes a lot to get here. This room's packed. But there are a lot of people that actually wanna see and watch and understand what happens. And you're taking that away when you censor the whole discussion. And so there is a less restrictive alternative. And I think it buys you more goodwill. Because people will automatically jump and say, "What are they hiding? Why are they doing it that way?" It doesn't have to be done that way. So I just would implore you, it works both ways. When I moved to this town, there were issues. If you read the Herald every week about the government in this town, I didn't know any of those folks. Back and forth and back and forth and back and forth. And we got to an administration where I thought their view was, "Let's just treat the community, our customers, as a speaker last time mentioned. Let's treat them with respect." And so I think it would behoove the board to sometimes, when counsel perhaps says, "Hey, give them three days' notice to do something," you know, perhaps grant an extension for a week. Those types of things will buy a lot more goodwill. And I know you're all here because you wanna do this. It is a lot of time, it's effort. And, you know, sometimes you have to make those decisions in a split second and don't think about the implications. But please, I think it's best for all of us if, you know, you just consider those types of things a little bit more carefully. And it will buy goodwill throughout the community. Happy holidays to everyone.
Before you leave, don't go. Because I would like to thank you. I have to commend you. Always very respectful and get your point across very eloquently. And it's the indication of what I was saying earlier. It's not that this board doesn't wanna hear anything negative. There's things that we don't do well or perfectly and people point them out to us and we try to be better for it. But I just would like to say thank you to you. Every time you address us, you do it with respect. And it's supposed to be a two-way street. That's the environment we wanna create here. So I appreciate that and I just, we hear you.
And I wanna thank you for that. And I will say, though, when certain things happen and we are treated as we're in a litigation posture, like, hey, we're not gonna give you an extension of time, that was for me hard to stomach.
And I understand.
And hard to believe. And I don't think it was because this board, I don't wanna throw anyone under the bus. I think it was, hey, we gotta do this really quickly. And, you know, you have lawyers and they say X, Y, Z, et cetera. But it resonates. People hear that story and they say, "How could that be?" And it just can't be.
I know, and there's other variables too, right? So then there's a pressure situation happening. And then there's also the kind of urgency we feel to make sure that we're giving information in a timely manner. And we felt that pressure at that time, too. When you came up the last time, I heard you loud and clear what you said. And I understand where you're coming from there, I really do. And apologize for that short-time turnaround because I understand where you're coming from. I do want you to understand that we also were taking it so seriously. And there was a matter of urgency coming from that side of the table. And I think we had everything lined up and set and we were ready to go. And it was like, okay, let's get that information out. However, what I can say is, I hope you understand too that while that might have closed at that point in time, that we're still open to information as evidenced by, you know, this opening dialogue that we've had with each other. We have information you wanna share with us still. We're still looking to take that information in. So we're not looking to close the door on anybody. I hope you can recognize we're trying to make positive steps in the right direction. And thank you for working with us.
Absolutely, but I'll add one last point on that. When the community sends an email to the board email address and you don't get responses like received, forwarded to board?
I would like to apologize for that.
That needs to happen.
That happened after the cybersecurity thing. We lost that response and didn't know it for a while.
It's just problematic.
Yes, it was, it was a problem. It was.
Some of my early emails never made it there. I don't know why I'm not saying.
I know. We did go through a very weird period, so I will acknowledge that and I'm sorry that that happened. But we had members of the community who regularly write us and honestly, we're the ones that said, "I used to get a response that said, 'You received this, what happened?'" And that's how we knew. Because we didn't realize that people weren't getting that, so we apologized for that.
And the solution is to disclose it at a board meeting and let folks know that that is going on.
Right.
So, I mean, it's just more about communication because it's very frustrating to send, spend a lot of time drafting, sending an email to the board and you hear nothing.
I apologize for that. We didn't realize that. We know now, but I think it's fixed. And if it's not, we need people to let us know, get in touch. I didn't hear anything, I didn't.
It went on for a while.